Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to City Hall for tonight's special Committee of the Whole meeting. Please let the record show that all the Aldermen save for Alderman Sino are present this evening.
Are we doing that first?
I thought we did that council first.
Oh, we do the council, but forgive me, to the City Council meeting, a regularly-scheduled City Council meeting. We kindly ask our clerk to take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Gene Kilburg?
Here.
Greg Mulhaddra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Jim Radecki?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We begin our City Council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask, since this is the cusp of Memorial Day celebration, Alderman Ron Singer.
Oh, please leave us. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Singer.
Thank you, sir.
Item 3A this evening is to consider the Mayor's appointment of Mary McKittrick to Deputy Clerk and Budget Officer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mulhaddra.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruno. Any questions or comments? Alderman Simonian.
Thank you, Mayor. Who is currently the Deputy Clerk and Budget Officer?
This is actually, it's a housekeeping issue.
Oh, okay.
This was not included on the May 4th agenda, so it was brought over, so.
Okay.
In fact, the City Administrator has always served as Deputy Clerk and Budget Officer.
Okay.
And we incorporated almost, gosh, seven years ago now? Six years ago? But, I mean, formally, with respect to the title and the appointments, yeah, so. That was my omission, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the appointment? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item number four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marks makes the motion. Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Greg Mulhaddra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Gene Kilburg?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We jump down to item 9A, under Other Items and Correspondence. 9A is to provide an update on the Route 31 Road Diet feasibility study. We have with us our Director of Public Works, Mr. Rich Babica. There's been a lot of correspondence back and forth regarding this matter with updates from both Rich and the City Administrator. So Mr. Babica here is to provide us with the latest update as of really this afternoon.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this afternoon, actually, this began last week when we received the final comments from IDOT regarding the proposed road diet. I actually contacted the Geometrics Board, or Bureau, within IDOT and asked if there was any possibility for reconsideration of the configuration of the taper. The City Council back in February directed staff to revise the Phase 1 report to shift the tapers further to the north, so that the tapers would begin and end roughly about 300 feet south of Forest View. That report was then modified to accommodate that direction and submitted to IDOT. When we received the paperwork from IDOT on May 11th, and that also caused some consternation among some of the public in the City Council because included within that packet was email, was a memo dated April 2nd. And I would just like to clarify some confusion on that memo. On April 13th, we had received some marked up pages from IDOT, specifically as part of the modified report where IDOT had identified some discrepancies, clerical errors, Scrivners errors and whatnot, and asked for clarifications on others. But within that email from IDOT, they referenced that they had drafted the letter, but they did not include that in the correspondence on April 13th. Because that correspondence had not been finalized and reviewed by the District Engineers' Office, they did not feel it was prudent to include that in the April 13th email due to the possibility that it may change, which would have the overall impact within the final packet. So when we received that letter notification on May 11th, which was IDOT's final review, they included that memo, which may or may not have had revisions, I'm not sure, because we weren't privy to when it was actually written first time. But they did not change the date. So even though that memo was dated April 2nd, the first time that city staff saw that memo was on May 11th, specifically the afternoon of May 11th. Very quickly, we started getting some feedback regarding the taper. So on that Friday, I had a meeting at District 1 with the District Engineer and some other related business, and I asked if there was a possibility to have that taper reconsidered to accommodate the City Council's request. By that time, we had already heard from several property owners along Route 31 corridor of their displeasure that the tapers had been shifted further to the south. The Geometrics Bureau did complete another internal review, much to their credit. They basically dropped everything to accommodate my request. And I heard back from the Bureau later this afternoon, or earlier this afternoon, in which they stated that their review stood from May 11th, that it was IDOT's preference that the taper be shifted approximately 550 feet north of Fabian. During this process, staff made numerous announcements to the public, to the interested parties, and to the City Council that Route 31 is a state highway, and that IDOT had the ultimate authority on what was going to happen within that road segment. They could modify our analysis, they could ignore our analysis, or they could adopt our analysis. In this case, IDOT chose to modify our request. It's important to note that when we started this process last summer, that the goal of the city was to conduct a road diet to reduce the four-lane cross-section of Route 31 to a three-lane cross-section. The first approach by the city was to pursue the installation of bike paths, because a bike path coincided with the city's long-term plans for that region, and as well as taking up more road space would by de facto make the road segment narrower. We quickly learned through our first analysis and our first blush of the data that Route 31 was not wide enough to accommodate two bike lanes along with the traffic at standard widths. But as a part of that investigation, we determined that there was an extensive stretch of Route 31 that was not 40 feet wide, which would not produce the four 10-foot lanes needed to accommodate the minimum state standards for a four-lane traffic cross-section. So we continued our investigation and our review, in which point in time, we found out that the traffic counts, even the projected traffic counts through 2040, would still accommodate two lanes of traffic with a common turn bay. So in essence, even though we started this process pursuing bike paths, we were able to prove conclusively that that segment of Route 31 at least could accommodate the traffic counts and the projected traffic counts with two lanes of traffic with a center turn median, in effect, still accomplishing what was the directive of the City Council and the Road Diet Task Force request. During the final presentation of the City Council, in order to accommodate the request of several business owners south of Forest View on the west side of Route 31, City Council directed staff and their consultants to shift that taper further to the north, which was done. But again, there was always the proviso that this was the state highway, and the state had the ultimate authority as to what was going to happen within this road segment. While it's unfortunate that we did not get everything we wanted, at the end of the day, we did win the battle, because we are going to get Route 31 reduced from four lanes of traffic to three lanes of traffic, well, actually, it'll be two lanes of traffic with a center turn median, which will address the safety concerns. It will address the accident rates. And with any luck, it'll address some of the speed issues that we all have heard complaints about, and also assist emergency response, specifically the fire department, in getting through the area, because now they'll have that center median to get around any stalled-out traffic. That all being said, there's really no action that's required by the City Council tonight. IDOT has completed their review. They've actually completed a second review at my request of the data. And now, it's my obligation to present to the City Council that unfortunately, we did not get everything we wanted, but we got most of what we wanted. And now, I have nothing, no other, nothing else to say except listen to your comments, and I will do the best to answer whatever questions I can, but please remember that IDOT conducted this review. I cannot speak for IDOT. I do not, I'm not privy to their reviews, their internal documents. So all I can do is answer your questions the best I can, but if I can't answer them, please remember that I'm not privy to that internal information.
Alderman Cummings?
Thank you, Rich. My first question would be the inclusion of certain items, the exclusion of other items. And I'm not asking you to guess how the state thinks, but in your conversations with them, did they tell you why they didn't include a right-hand turn lane southbound 31 onto westbound Fabian, which would prevent stacking that they realized was going to happen on southbound 31 at Fabian?
Because that was outside our project scopes to add additional turn lanes. We basically tried to piggyback on the state's resurfacing program. And there was, this project was to be undertaken and completed at no cost to the citizens of the City of Geneva. In order to add an additional turn bay to southbound 31 and to westbound Fabian traffic, there would be the need for property acquisition, reconfiguration of the intersection, as well as traffic signal improvements. And I can speak to that, because that was one of the options that the IDOT gave us regards to Third Street. If you may have identified in a packet that the tapering at the northern end of the project begins south of Third Street, roughly at Elizabeth, and that is because that is within the scope of where IDOT is resurfacing Route 31. If we were to extend our project north of Third Street, or in this case, south of Fabian, we would have to conduct extensive reengineering and reconfiguration of those intersections. And then to add more complexity to the issue is that the intersection of Fabian and 31 is outside the city's corporate limits. It's actually under the jurisdiction of the King County Department of Transportation, as well as the City of Batavia. This information has been released to those various agencies, but we have no, we have very limited influence over how they program improvements within that area.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
I'll pass. I'm actually going to ask it under item B.
Alderman Mulhaddra?
So you floated, or you talked to them about the taper concept. Is it possible to talk to them about other concepts? For example, the left turn lane into the Forest Preserve, as I understand it, is something that neither the Forest Preserve requested or wanted, nor did the businesses at that end of Route 31. So if they could forego the left turn lane at that part, we could gain perhaps another lane of some sort, thereby relieving stacking. Can we talk to them about that idea? Did we and can we?
That concept came up very early, and actually, it was broached by IDOT themselves. Very early on in this process, IDOT wanted that protected left turn into the Fabian Forest Preserve. That was initiated through them, and that was actually one of the conversations that I had with the Bureau of Geometrics back on April 13th. Their original thought was to keep, to try to keep the southbound lanes the two lanes of traffic, but to sacrifice one of the northbound lanes to accommodate a protected left turn movement in and out of the Campana Building and into the Forest Preserve, and restrict the two northbound lanes into one lane of traffic. But they were looking at their very early revisions of the drawings, and that was an extremely, as they put it, awkward transition for traffic to have two southbound lanes coming down with one northbound lane heading north.
So it was talked about?
And it was initiated from IDOT.
Anyone else on item 9A?
If there's.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you. No, you know what? I'll wait till 9B. Thank you.
Anyone join, Alderman Kilburg?
Once you believe, or once you assume that our consultant would have, would have had an understanding of some of these challenges as it relates to the state beforehand, as the plans were developed, in other words, I would think that when you hire a consultant, they should have a working knowledge of what the state might be inclined to go along with or not go along with. You feel that we were well-represented as related to the consulting on this project?
I do. And the reason that I can say that honestly is that the first iteration of this design called for the taper to begin roughly at the property line to the Campana Building. And it was two lanes of traffic, one northbound, one southbound, with a common turn bay or protected turn bays, the length of the project all the way down to the Fabian Forest Preserve. So the iteration that we see before us, that has been reconfigured by IDOT, very closely resembles the options that were presented by SEMCON at the public and open houses and to the original city, to the City Council's presentation, which was then modified by the City Council by shifting the taper further to the north.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais on item 9A? Anyone joining us this evening? Again, to reiterate what Mr. Babica said, there's no action required or even necessary? Moving on to item 9B?
Thank you.
As in, boy. Consider staff requests to secure reimbursement costs associated with revisions and resubmital of modified Phase 1 study for the Illinois Route 31 Road Diet.
So moved.
Motion by Singer, seconded by, was that Marks? Bruno, excuse me? This matter is on the floor, and Mr. Babica hasn't moved an inch. Any questions or comments for the director?
Actually, I forgot this was coming up. I put my notes back down.
Alderman Simonian, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know what the costs are?
The estimate that I have received from SEMCON varied from $3,000 to $14,000. And the basis on that estimate was that SEMCON was hoping to piggyback on an abbreviated project report that IDOT should have created for the resurfacing of Route 31, because this was a maintenance project that was informed and educated, is the proper term from IDOT today, that they do not conduct such abbreviated project reports for resurfacing projects we consider them to be maintenance. Therefore, SEMCON is going to have to create an abbreviated project report that will incorporate much of the data completed during the Phase 1 study, but also there are some environmental impacts that they have to go through, a brief historical survey, much as the same work, the background work that we had to do for undertaking the water main project on North First Street. And because they have to create all that information from scratch, it's readily available, but it's still a considerable amount of staff time. Pull it all together, now the range is going to be somewhere between $12,000 and $14,000 that I expect to bring in front of the City Council relatively shortly.
Okay. Thank you. What are we, what are we voting on for a dollar? Are we voting, or are we, is it just discussion?
We're, yeah, we're voting. We're voting with respect to the staff's recommendation to seek reimbursement. That reimbursement, as I think we all know, is reimbursement for the fees for this modified Phase 1.
Right.
Because, as we all know, the majority, actually, excuse me, all of the funds provided to date have come from private coffers, not City of Geneva coffers.
Right. Well, I guess I'm, I mean, I'm the one that spearheaded this thing, so, but I'm hard-pressed to vote on an open-ended $3,000 to $14,000, whatever. And I know it'll be my responsibility to go get commitment for this, and I have no problem doing that, but I can't go for an open check commitment. So I would prefer to table this till we get a number.
Well, you clarified what that range is.
The range right now is between $12,000 and $14,000, and that really is a development that occurred within about probably the last 120 minutes. And SEMCON, Randy is, Randy Bus is, was not available to perform a proposal once I was informed by IDOT that their assistance would not be available with this abbreviated project report. So we've gone from a modified Phase 1 to an abbreviated project report.
Do you, can I continue?
Of course.
Do you, Rich, do you feel, is this it? In other words, once this is submitted, we're done? Or is IDOT coming back for a third bite at the apple?
I'm reluctant to speak for the State of Illinois. But it is my understanding that this is basically dotting the i's and crossing the t's with the State of Illinois to close out this project and move to the construction phase.
Okay. I would still prefer, now that I have the numbers, I mean, I don't know how we can vote yes and then not go after this person, because we have no commitment for this part of it. I mean, I just want to get commitment. So is there a way that we can table this? That now we have the numbers, I can go get commitment and then come back and revisit it?
You can certainly offer a motion to table if you'd like. It requires a second, no debate is allowed, and then a simple up or down vote on whether to table the matter can be taken.
Can I ask another question before?
Sure.
If it's not tabled, and we vote yes on this, where is the city going to go get the money? Who are they going after?
The city is not providing a penny toward this effort.
So the city's not going to submit anything?
Correct. What will happen is Mr. Babica will receive the final numbers, if you will, and then that matter will be considered, how do I say this, accounts payable by those who want to see this work completed.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. The recommendation is that City Council directs staff to secure reimbursement from the Road Diet Task Force. So I believe that there were some residents identified as the task force, so that's who we would be seeking reimbursement from.
Okay. But this puts no commitment on their, puts no commitment on them.
Well, can you answer that question? Let's say hypothetically, the Road Diet Task Force says, you know what? No, thanks. We're not going to pay any additional dollars. Where does the community stand in that regard, in your professional opinion?
It would complicate our relationship with IDOT. They've juggled quite a number of internal resources to accommodate the expedited review process for this process. We have a number of significant infrastructure projects in the near future with the state that we have not finalized our agreements with. It could definitely complicate those negotiations and processes. Again, I can't speak for the State of Illinois. But I think we would definitely be causing an undue irritation for the city that we would do our best to avoid.
With respect to any work commencing, what would happen in that regard?
The resurfacing is still going to go forward.
Right. And when's that expected to begin?
As soon as this gets committed by the City of Geneva to move forward.
So in theory, the resurfacing can begin, the restriping?
Could be held up.
Could be held up.
Till this gets finally.
So we could have a 35-foot ribbon of pavement with no striping.
Well, there would be temporary pavement markings.
AKA DuPage Airport Authority. Do you have a question?
I just had a question. If, for some reason, the task force members said they weren't going to contribute to this, and the city said, well, it's basically your project, we're not going to contribute to it, and we didn't submit a revised Phase 1, would the project continue?
The project would definitely continue. If you actually refer back to the April 2nd memo, you will see one of the items, I believe it's the end of the first page, beginning of the second page, where it says that the revised pavement marking program has already been submitted to the Bureau of Construction, which it has.
Right.
So that is going to be included within, or should be included, in the current resurfacing program on Route 31.
Alderman Simonian still has the floor.
So basically, what you're saying is if we do nothing, something actually still may get done? Is this a no-one-to-hold-'em, no-one-to-fold-'em scenario?
The, I don't want to speak for IDOT. So I'm trying to answer your question truthfully without committing IDOT to a project. But again, referring back to their April 2nd letter, it states that the revised striping plan has been submitted to the Bureau for Construction for inclusion within this current resurfacing program. So I'm interpreting that, that the pavement is going to get marked at the current configuration as redesigned and reconfigured by the State of Illinois Transportation Department. Could this lead to rough feelings between the City of Geneva and the state with IDOT? I can't speak to that. I don't want to make my life any more complicated than it needs to be, so my preference would be that we wouldn't go down that road. But if that's the path the city chooses to take, I, you're willing and humble servant, and I will carry on.
So if we vote on this, which is voting on?
The recoupment of costs estimated between $12,000 and $14,000.
And that the city won't submit anything without knowing there's a potential reimbursement?
Correct.
So guaranteeing the reimbursement and not guaranteeing the reimbursement isn't going to impact this vote tonight, then? So we really don't have to table it?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
But I will say for the record, my fear is that if the reimbursement is sought, IDOT's going to seek that from somebody or some organization. If the Road Diet Task Force opts not to, then they're going to come to the city. Does the city have its right to say, hey, we ain't paying for it either? Well, I guess technically. And then we've not only caused hard feelings between the City of Geneva and IDOT, but also the City of Geneva and the task force.
Right. Well, I mean, in all honesty, knowing the group that's involved, I mean, we're, you know, 100 yards away on a marathon race, and I don't think it's going to, I think it will be fine, but I can't speak on their behalf. It's just my personal opinion and my gut feel. So that said, then, there's no need, there's no need to table it unless the city feels uncomfortable that in the event the task force does not want to make that payment, it puts the city in an uncomfortable position with IDOT. And if that makes the city feel uncomfortable, then I suggest we table it till we can get a commitment. So I turn it over to the city to ask their comfort level on that scenario.
I'll recognize Mr. Burns in just a moment, but by all means, Bruno, Kilburg, and Mulhaddra, it's my impression, I believe it's the City Council's impression, and perhaps even those who have been following this story for a long time, when this first topic was raised, it was under the auspices that it would cost the citizens of Geneva, excuse me, those not on 31, if you will, those not involved in the Road Diet Task Force, a penny. We're at the stage now where there's additional pennies required, and the City of Geneva's position remains, it should not come from the general fund budget. So that's, that's the issue.
And I understand and appreciate that, and I agree to that. I support that. It's just that the task force also thought that all they were required to submit was a modified Phase 1, and IDOT has come back now and requested additional. So it is what it is. And I don't have a problem with.
It's because we also made changes to it as well, the council did.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Correct.
My advice would be not to table the matter, because it does no good.
Right.
IDOT's looking for some direction.
I agree.
So.
I agree. Forget if I, if I put the motion out there.
Not at all.
I'll reel it back in.
Never interpreted by the chair, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, Alderman Kilburg, Alderman Mulhaddra?
Actually, I think my question's been answered, so I'll see.
You've passed twice now.
Do I only get three per meeting?
Only get three. Alderman Kilburg?
This has been a little bit of an awkward discussion, I think, in that there's probably a lot of people who are watching this deliberation and wondering, okay, what is the Road Diet Task Force? Who's on the Road Diet Task Force? And why is there someone prepared to pony up to the tune of $33,000, $34,000 already, and now we're asking for another $14,000? I guess maybe this is a good point to elaborate a little bit more on who the Road Diet Task Force consists of, and. Force consists of, and where, can we identify who these people are and who's backing this project?
First of all, I don't believe it's my privilege to share their names without their permission, for starters. It's citizens in the neighborhood who have rallied behind this because of the commitment that no taxpayer dollars will be spent, and that it's just a restriping versus anything else having to do with it, and are interested in, were interested originally through the bicycle bike paths, and now even more so, the safety issue regarding the streets. So I can request their permission to use their names, and if they agree to that, I'd be more than happy to share that with the public and with the council at our next meeting, because I'll be in conversation with them to see if they're willing to support the final leg of this trifecta.
No, I'm just saying, I guess if I was sitting at home watching this on TV, I guess I'd have, I'd be asking the question, well, why is somebody prepared to spend $47,000 for a road improvement, and why don't they want their name to be identified? And I guess my question would be also whether or not that this is some type of a, actually, this is an initiative, it's a political action to an extent, and when you're spending $47,000, there has to be some level of disclosure as relates to where those funds are coming from, I believe, as relates to good community government. And that's my concern, is that if I ask the question and I can't answer it, you know, somebody sitting around this table ought to be able to answer that question.
And I don't have a problem answering it, but I feel compelled to ask permission of the individual, just as I would ask your permission if you had donated and the public wanted to know who that was. I don't know if they want to remain anonymous, I don't know if they are willing to share that information. The whole intent of this, for anyone who's watching, was that no taxpayer dollars were going to be used, and if we could gather, and it's actually going to be more than $47,000 at the end of the day, it'll be more like $54,000 to $57,000. But it was, it's money being contributed without asking a taxpayer to contribute. So it's just, for me, it's just a courtesy and consideration, and I don't know that they want their names known, or don't want their names known. And, but I will ask, and I will bring it forward.
All I'm saying is, is that $54,000 is influencing the decision of the community, and I think for the purposes of full disclosure, I think it'd be beneficial that we knew more about this Road Diet Task Force, is all I'm saying.
Well, I disagree. I don't think the $54,000 is influencing the city or the community. I believe that the $54,000 paid for an engineering study for the city or the council to review to see if it was worth the while or worth the interest of the city to take the next step. Without it, we would not have even had the opportunity to make the decision. So I don't think it's influencing the decision. I think it's just, it's just providing the facts to get to the decision.
All I'm saying, though, is that $54,000 is influencing the outcome of what's going to take place on Route 31. And I just feel as though the community should be the beneficiary of more information about who's involved in this process, and if they're, you know, what's their initiative, or what's their agenda.
Well, the agenda, we know what the agenda is. And, but I will, like I said, I will, I will ask, and I'll let you know next week.
Great.
If that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Alderman Maladra.
So I was going to ask Kevin and Mary, we often do not to exceed, you know, we vote on doing something to an amount not to exceed, so in this case, could we say to the task force, we're talking about an amount not to exceed $14,000?
In my opinion, if we had that in writing, I would say yes. But since we don't have a written quote, I would be hesitant to put a cap on it until we get a written quote.
Okay.
We've gotten an estimate, $12,000 to $14,000 is an estimate right now.
This is a quote from SEMCON, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if we, if we were to hold off on any action as far as reimbursement goes until we have that quote, what would the delay to the project be?
I'm already requesting a special council meeting next Tuesday to accommodate a last-minute IDOT request for an unrelated project. Fairly confident that I can get that proposal in from SEMCON in time to make that, excuse me, in time to make that special council meeting on the 26th.
Okay, so, not that I necessarily want to go through all the rigmarole of tabling and things like that, but I don't know necessarily why we need to do anything tonight until we have that written proposal, which we can have by next week.
I think the operative word on the, I think the operative word on 9B is reimbursement. The temperature I'm trying to take is whether or not this council is, wants to be consistent with what we've done all along, and that is not pay for anything. If the council feels differently, then certainly this is the time to speak up and say, you know what? Let's go ahead and cover those costs. I don't sense that.
Fair enough. Well, let me keep going for that.
Now, you passed twice, man, you can't go.
So, that's a different question than, well, I guess it's the same question, same, if the vote is, should we approach the residents for reimbursement? I think that's one question. If the request is, should we approach the residents for reimbursement with a blank check? I think that's an entirely different question.
Right.
So, I kind of get where Tom's going. So we could wait a week to get a written quote, which would make Mary more comfortable, or we could put a cap on it, which would make Alderman Simoni more comfortable.
If we put a cap on this, though, then the question becomes, wow, it came in at 16, 5, who's responsible for the other 2,500? And as you all know, we sought reimbursement from the task force for a paltry $254 not more than one month ago, consistent with our pledge to each other and the community that no general fund monies will be spent on this project. I know Alderman Simoni can echo that, so.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if I could? What I'm actually looking for, and I think what staff is looking for, it would be a concurrent approach to this. The first phase would be a commitment from the Road Diet Task Force to reimburse the city somewhere between the range of $12,000 to $14,000. While the same time that I'm working to secure the final number and proposal from SEMCON and bringing that back in front of the city council, because at the end of the day, city council still has to authorize that expenditure contract. So it's actually a two-faceted approach, the way I'm seeing it. One, someone from the city council has to approach the task force to secure their commitment to reimburse the city, and I think we need to have that in hand before we authorize the execution of a contract, because once we execute that contract, the city's on a hook for that contract. If we don't have a commitment from the task force in advance to reimburse the city, we are now, in essence, holding resources allocated for other projects hostage while we negotiate reimbursement from a task force. That's just the way I see the process working right now.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This seems worded such that I don't see why we can't go ahead, acknowledge we will seek reimbursement, and then at staff level, when that number gets finalized, and we've already decided, and you can just go right to that task force, I, I don't know, maybe there's legalese I'm not understanding, but it seems like a pretty, pretty easy thing to do, is acknowledge we will seek reimbursement, and maybe that won't be for several days, but we can at least acknowledge it here. Thank you.
You're comfortable with how 9B is written in terms of the motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Simoni, for a second time, then Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, Mayor. Rich, when is IDOT expecting this revision? You know, did they give us a date certain, or?
They did not give us a date certain, but Geneva Construction's been chomping at the bit to start the final construction phase of this process. So I think IDOT is expecting a fairly fast turnaround by the city council in moving. Because again, even if the contract is executed next Tuesday, there's a fairly substantial amount of legwork that has to be completed by SEMCON, and then the review process to get that into IDOT. This is, I've seen similar abbreviated project reports, and only the state can call a 200-page documented abbreviated project report. So it's, the faster we get this turned and started, the better it's going to be.
Thank you. My comments kind of go with Alderman Kilburg's. You know, coming in at a little later stage with this, but having followed this issue, while this is very laudable, we appreciate the efforts of the task force, this feels to say uncomfortable is an understatement. To be making decisions with other people bankrolling it, the people on the task force obviously have an interest in this, and I understand that, but it's a special interest group, in my opinion. So, again, while I give them credit and thank them for that, I guess I would ask the council that, you know, before we ever consider entering into some sort of an agreement with another citizens group that is willing to fund something like this, that we look very closely at that because of things like this that crop up that may have been unanticipated in the beginning. What happens if there's more costs? I mean, there's potential other pitfalls with this, so, you know, while everybody was well-intentioned from the, from the beginning with this, you know, perhaps we've learned that you have to be very careful, or set very strict parameters on the front end before we enter into something like this, because it's, you know, my sense is it's getting uncomfortable, so, anyway. Thank you.
From the dais, anyone else? Item 9B. Mr. Burns, did you want, wish to, if you could join us up at the podium, Rob?
I'd like to make sure that I can speak before you're through with this A or B or C or F or whatever.
Do you want to speak now, sir? If you do.
I'll be fine.
Okay, join us at the podium. Thank you very much. And just for the record, your name and your address and?
Rob Burns, 1612 Fairway Circle, Geneva.
Thank you very much.
So Geneva resident, also property owner in Geneva. See a couple of new faces here from when I was here a couple of months ago. It's Alderman Burkhardt, Alderman Rodecky, or new. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And I think Don Cummings was out the last time I made a presentation. So I did talk with him briefly today to see if I could catch him up on what I actually said. I find this whole thing extremely disturbing on a variety of counts. I don't see, I thought when we had the last meeting, and I think the major thrust of my remarks, which were shorter than some, if you recall, basically said that, and I thought that if there was a breakthrough in thinking, it was simply that this mile of road is not homogeneous in nature at all. And the idea of a road diet, applying it uniformly to the entire length of road, was ridiculous. It made no sense. And using the own data that was presented in the various reports, I thought I was able to apparently succeed in getting others to agree with me. I remember Alderman Simoni was the, I was very happy to hear, after making my remarks, he said something to the effect of, I think I agree with this guy, you know, in so many words. And maybe the way we got started on the project as much as, I don't know, a year and a half ago or something, led it down a path to where we ended up more recently. It started out with bicycles and park districts and connecting bike paths and so forth, and so, a quick summary for those that weren't here was that the northern half from Fargo on is intensely residential with many streets, driveways, and entries. I think I counted 25, I counted them personally, comparing that to the area south where there were basically four locations on the right heading south and only one on the left, the Forest Preserve. And so applying the same solution to the entire length of road wouldn't be obvious to me from a logic point of view. You have institutional campuses down on the right, you have residences on the north. Your own data showed there were no accidents on the south, they were all on the north. The people that complained and talked about their driveways getting in and out were all on the north and none on the south. Apparently, Houghton Mifflin, my neighbor to the north, another institutional campus, after Tom had spoken in and the consultants came up, and there were questions from several of you about, does this make sense and so forth, he volunteered that he had heard from Houghton Mifflin that very day, that they were heavily opposed to any change, keep it the same way that it is. I don't quite see why there should be a change in that, and as best I can tell, I'm not aware of anyone here that's changed their mind. It appears that Mr. IDOT, for whatever their reasons may be, thinks that they want to keep it more like what they had in mind, or what we initially were submitting. And that is despite the fact that I'm not the first person to raise his hand about this. True? I hope you all know this. This was in these reports that were generated by our consultants, hired by, funded by the task force. And slide 18, okay, in the first meeting over at Western Avenue, identified the southern end from near Fabian Parkway as an area that needed help, okay? It needed, quote, mitigation. It wasn't going to work, you know, in consultant's language. It doesn't work right. Not that it's potentially a problem, it already is a problem, all right? There's a problem there. Cars back up from that intersection from time to time, and they back up, not to the Campana Drive, they back up to my southern drive, 2000 South Batavia. That already happens. And it was stated in this meeting right here that some have said they back up past that drive, well up to my, toward my second drive, and one person, and some of these came from city staff comments, Mr. Coulter suggested, and not me, these are, God knows who they are, people that observe these things. So with all that in mind, I'm at a loss to understand why IDOT, or anyone with some reason, would not, you know, recognize their own consultants. Apparently, one of the solutions would be, if you're a transportation person, would be to add another lane down at Fabian. A good percentage of cars going south at night turn right on Fabian. This is apparently well-known if you're a transportation person. To thus not transportation, I think is logical. People go out toward Mill Creek, and the areas, at the end of the day, they're going home. So the problem is that a lot of cars are in that right-hand lane, and they can't get out of there. If you had another lane to park cars in while they waited to turn, the stacking problem pushing it up the street would be minimized. Okay? So what was asked for before was, instead of having two lanes to stack cars in, how about one and a half, you know, or something less than two? And I came in and said, no, it's not working now, okay? And it's, why is it going to get any better in the future? So you all said, fine. Makes some sense. I think, Tom, you asked to consult, is there any reason we need to stop there? Could we go further north? What's keeping us, why limit it to that? I just watched the whole thing happen. I wasn't driving the discussion. I thought it was driven by common sense and logic, and there it went. So sitting here tonight and hearing this A, B, I wasn't sure when I was supposed to speak. The A was like a report, what am I supposed to say? I disagree with it? Obviously, I'm not happy with it. I guess I do disagree, it doesn't make any sense to me. But now B, voting on funds, it's, you know, I just didn't want to leave here and not speak. I don't understand it at all. And I'm not dealing with the source of the funds, I'm just dealing with the logic of it. So it's already known to be a problem, it's going to get worse, putting it back to where it was isn't solving the problem, it's just not making it worse, right? I still may have an occasional issue there, if there's more tra- more traffic generated down there, it's going to get worse. Oh, more traffic. Can any of you think any reasons why there might be some more coming in the near future? How far away from the new parking garage are we? I happened to go up there on Sunday to test it out and look at it. I see we now have 575 numbered spaces up there, okay? I read in the paper we're having a 50% increase. I'm not sure that, I was thinking it was 320 plus 160 was 40. I'm confused, obviously. But there's a lot more cars in there, okay? Do you think some of them that are there are going to start coming south at the end of the workday? I do. Do you know how many cars are heading south at the end of the workday today? I don't. Does anyone here know? Do you think if it's a 50% increase, if not more, that whatever the number is, it's more likely to go up by another 50%? Soon, very soon. So, if it was 100 cars, 200 cars, there's going to be more heading south in rush hour every Monday through Friday. So, I, I believe there's a project, and I'm not sure anyone's allowed to talk about it, but it's with one of my neighbors. They're talking a whole bunch of new living units on Batavia Avenue. How many cars per unit? One, two? Say it's two. Maybe it's 80 new cars right on my own street where, where the property is there. What if Houghton Mifflin decides to expand? Did anyone think of Campana where they were going to have that school down there at the end of the street? It was in the consultant's report. It's labeled in there. Apparently, it's been tabled for a while, the last I heard, but it could come back or something else could happen. And lo and behold, I own a campus myself. I have 335 parking spaces that already exist. I don't have to build any more to make any trouble for myself. They're already there. Would I like to see every one of them filled? Absolutely. You know, we're, we're significantly leased, but we have, who doesn't have more space to lease? You know, so we have more space to lease. So, I see more cars coming down there, not fewer. And I'm, I'm at a total loss for why IDOT can't see that. I was totally chagrined to hear just a few minutes ago that the Forest Preserve left was apparently something that IDOT themselves has been interested in for a long period of time. I've asked about that question. I've, I've never heard that before. We, we all know, we agreed in the last meeting, that nobody goes in the doggone place, okay? It's not a heavy user, particularly during the week when there's this issue, okay? You don't need it left there. When, when people are going in on the weekend, there's no cars there on a Saturday or Sunday. It's crazy. So, if that in any way is driving the need to have a center lane going all the way up the street, it's ridiculous, okay? It doesn't make any sense. So, it, it almost seems like they have a mindset of, "Oh, we should have uniformity. If we're going to have a center lane, we might as well run it the whole length of the road, regardless of what's there." And I don't care if they're a government agency or not. It doesn't make any damn sense. I mean, you know, so, all I'm asking for is to recognize that, that we have different constituencies in this town. I'm a resident here. I, you know, I, I feel strongly about being treated well as a resident, just like any, anyone else does. Maybe more so. I don't know. But if you have another type of property, I think it deserves commensurate treatment. Do I need to cite that we pay a lot of taxes? I don't know. I wish they were lower, but we pay. We have to. We have, we brought in, a recent tenant brought in over 100 jobs, okay? I remember years ago when this, when Roquette came to our campus, people went crazy. It was like, "Wow, that's like this great company." But we had like 30 jobs, 20 when they first showed up. This is 100 jobs, okay? Every bit is good or better than Roquette, okay? Roquette's a great company. I love them, okay? This is a good company. There'll be others. We've had others, okay? Those people don't deserve to, to have to eat, you know, I asked Don Cummings today, "Would you like to park, come out of work if you were working on my campus and not be able to get out of the driveway?" He says, "Of course not." I said, "Well, yeah, I assume so. Who, who would want that?" So, I don't think it's complicated. Just don't make it worse. So, I think we're doing a lot of, a lot of good things. I think some of the other institutional campuses do good things as well, and they, they should be fairly treated, even though there's residential on the other end of the same street. That's all. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure I'm, you know, emoting a little passion here, but I do have some stored up, so.
Mr. Burns, I do just want to make one statement that I think you're probably aware of, and I want to make certain others are aware of as well. The third tier of the parking deck, while open, and is something to certainly celebrate, we will soon be mourning the loss of almost an equivalent amount of spots on the south side of the tracks as well. As I think all of us know, once the UP and Metro start to build their third line, we're losing 100-plus parking spots on the south side of the tracks. So, it's almost a wash.
A little, somewhat less, but yes, yes, I'm, I'm with it.
Okay, yeah.
And I don't know, you know, I'm sitting here as a citizen. Is that going to be tomorrow? Could it be two years, three years?
No, it's supposed to be two years ago, but yeah, you're right.
I went to a meeting at least five years ago.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So, could it be another five before it even, you know, I don't really know.
It's supposed to be scheduled, supposed to begin actually engineering, what, the fall?
Great. So, I, I acknowledge your point.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, so. And I think perhaps, I'll be the one who says it, and you and I had a great conversation earlier in the week as well, or last week. I think the challenge we face is that despite our best intentions and our best ideas that we thought were solid, I thought they were solid, it's IDOT's road. And IDOT has that final authority to say, "We like that. That's great. Well done. However, we think this is best. And now that you've opened this Pandora's Box of a diet, we're going to produce the diet what we think is best for the area." I think that's the challenge. And you heard Mr. Babica say earlier with respect to the intersection, "That ain't our intersection." We'd have to fund, you'd have the entire task force moving. I mean, there'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars in that study just for the intersection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that's not ours.
No, I know. I, I wanted to bring that to the floor.
Given that, that that isn't going to be done realistically anytime soon, then not making it worse right now by what appears to be a rather arbitrary treatment of the entire road uniformly doesn't make any sense. Whether, whether your IDOT, I mean, I'd like to talk to the person at IDOT and explain to us why that's logical.
And we, we have a phone number for you, don't we, Rich?
We do. Actually, it's a webpage now.
It's a webpage, so.
Yeah, so, anyway, those are, those are my, my comments, okay?
Are there any questions?
And I guess throw out one other possibility, and as, I don't know if anyone here would even consider it, but, you know, you don't have to do a road diet.
We have, we're, that horse has left the barn. IDOT has approved a road diet. IDOT's going to develop a road diet. We cannot go back to four lanes because we discovered through our own analysis that Route 31 is not up to snuff with respect to width to allow four lanes. So, in essence, we've done IDOT a favor by acknowledging, or by showing them, "Your road isn't standard. Therefore, your liability is X." In a sense, they should be sending us candies and flowers saying, "Thank you for letting us know that." Now that they know that, there's no way in heck it's going to be four lanes anymore. That's the real, how do you do?
Well, all right, fine. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the, uh, yes, sir. Yes, please do. Welcome.
My name is Chuck Toland. I'm the director for the Houghton Mifflin facility.
Hey, Chuck, how are you?
At 1900. I don't want to belabor this issue. It sounds like it's already been decided. But I do want to go on the record that the employees of Houghton Mifflin, which a large percentage are residents of Geneva, are totally against this. I would like to add, after sitting through the conversation that, that the council members had, I have to agree with the two aldermen over here that asked about the, the task force. And it would seem to me that there is special interest with this group, and that a decision is being made based on special interest opposed to business interests. We feel very strongly that the changes in the traffic patterns in front of our facility is going to cause issues for our employees getting in and out of the facility, and at least cause some safety concerns. So, once again, just wanted to go on record that we're against it, and, and you're going against the interest of the employees that work there that are residents of Geneva.
Mr. Toland, is it?
It's Mr. Toland, yes.
Can I trouble you to spell your last name?
T-O-L-A-N-D.
A-N-D, Toland, okay. May I ask you a question as well?
Yes, please.
This is my own edification. It's, it's my understanding that just as Mr. Burns and, and others were notified of the meetings held many, many months ago, were you as well notified of those meetings?
I, I was notified of two of the meetings.
Okay.
The first one was at Wildwood. I actually attended.
Okay, great.
And at that point, the plan was, the bike paths were still in, in the project.
That's correct.
And the, the tapering was going to take place after our facility, north of our facility.
Okay.
Okay? So, the, at the time of the meeting that was just maybe about a month ago over the utilities works.
Correct.
One of the managers from my facility actually put in, sent it in writing to you guys.
Right, okay.
That we were against it. So, we were unable to make that meeting, but we did send something to you guys stating what our, what our, our position was on this, on this issue.
And the position opposed was on a road diet per se?
It's on having the.
The tapering in front of.
The tapering in front of the facility.
Got it, okay.
So.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Toland, if you're willing to address, deflect, or answer? Alderman Burkhardt?
Yes, I, I just want to express my empathy for you, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Toland, and your frustration. I understand it. I happened to be at the February, just as a citizen, at the meeting where this city council made changes to the consultant's report. And, you know, sitting from the audience, it seemed to make sense. It seemed to make sense that the people who live here and understand the traffic patterns on Route 31, and understand how differences of time of day and the north end versus the south end would, you know, make some very understandable changes that, like I said, made sense to me at the time. And I'm, I understand your frustration, and it seems like our hands are tied, though, because it sounds like, from what I gather, whether we get the reimbursement from the, the task force or not, that IDOT could move forward with this restriping and the road diet. If we did nothing else, it seems to me that's what we're saying, so.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, you know, I'm not very political, so I'll be blunt, and maybe this is inappropriate to say this, but it would seem that this task force is made up of residents that are interested in improving their lot within their property, their individual property. And you've got a business that employs 300 people that, you know, is, is going to be disrupted. And so, you've got a handful of residents that are making, to the point of the aldermen, that, yes, to me, listening to the conversation, I agree that it sounds like they are buying their way. So, I mean, and, you know, I've been instructed from, from officers of our company that if the disruption that we foresee, hopefully we're wrong, but if the disruption to our employees and if they are put at a safety risk, then we'll look at somewhere else to go, quite frankly. So, any other questions? That's all I got to say.
Alderman Maladra?
I don't have, I don't have questions. I just have comments. So, I'm, I'm bothered by your statement that we don't care about businesses, and I'm bothered by your statement that these residents who decided to make something happen have some sort of dark, disgusting purpose. The fact that we care about businesses is evident from the way that we changed the plan after it was submitted by the consultants. We heard from the businesses. We recognized the validity of what you had to say. We proposed changes that got shot down. I don't know IDOT, but I know that they're engineers, and they probably have reasons for wanting to do what they're doing. What they're doing and what they're proposing to do fits within a 2040 traffic plan. You've got your projections, they have their projections, we have dual linked projections here. I don't know what's going to play out. But I do know that nobody here, nobody there even intends to make the situation worse. We also have to recognize, what is that situation? And in a way, we stumbled upon that accidentally. But the situation, and we, we saw evidence of this during the presentations, we, we have a road that's not wide enough for the traffic configuration that was there. We saw that cars straddle the lanes. They don't stay in their lanes. We saw that they speed. They don't go 35. We have, we have talked about, about accidents galore, side swipes, people losing their mirrors. Something needed to be done. And as we looked at what should be done, we discovered, lo and behold, the cause. The cause is the road was too narrow. So, to take the task force to task for that, or to take the city to task for that, is misplaced blame. The problem is the way it was configured originally, not the way that we want to configure it. You know, I'm not denying all of your points. Getting out of your place is going to be more difficult. As far as, do we place more emphasis on businesses or residents? I don't know. We heard from a lot of residents that getting off of Fargo is going to be more difficult. That doesn't seem to bother you guys at all, though, so maybe you don't care about residents. So, like most of the problems that we spend more than five minutes talking about, we've never escaped without pissing somebody off.
I, I appreciate that. My intent is not to be adversarial, honestly.
No.
Okay? But back to the questioning about who is on this task force, okay? Just as a spectator, okay? Since we can't know who they are, they're secret, it's left to my imagination what they're up to. So, and I'll just leave it at that.
No, that's, I get it. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think Alderman Simonian?
Yeah, I just, I.
And again, the, the guiding principle here is frank yet respectful, so.
Yeah.
And we're grateful that you're here. We really are.
I appreciate the opportunity.
And I just want to echo a little bit of what Alderman Maladra was just saying. Our intent, we voted unanimously, I mean, if, if we had our druthers, if we, if we were a king for a day for IDOT, everybody would get what they want. Residents would get what they want. You guys would get, we, we supported that. If we were against that, we would have never made the changes and incurred the more additional task force cost to do those changes. The task force, if they didn't have, these are businessmen who are, know about business, and they're concerned about business. They would have never even entertained paying an additional fee to redo it again because there was concerns by yourself and Mr. Burns. We all supported that. We all believe it. None of us are in agreement, I don't think, with what IDOT has come back with. If we had our opportunity, which Mr. Babica has done, is to, in fact, request that they reconsider this. We've asked them a number of times. So, I think we're all in the, the same boat. To give you, I guess, a, a little more insight as to this task force, I mean, everybody lives off of 31, either directly or indirectly. It's a dangerous road if you live there. We originally thought that we were going to put bike paths in. When we found out this, this safety issue, it's, it's a major safety issue. The individual that built my home was coming in and got broadsided, and his wife got killed on 31. So, it is a dangerous road on this end. So, safety is a precedent. We, and I totally can appreciate your end of it, the safety issue, and I can appreciate Mr. Burns, the back, you know, the stacking and everything else. But we, we, you know, it's like, sort of like, "Don't shoot the messenger. We're on your side." I mean, believe me, we're on your side. And this task force isn't, "We'll show them," or "We'll show the north end versus," it's not a north end, south end. It's a, you know, what's, it's, it's a safety, it's actually turned into a safety issue. It turned into a bike to, to support our bike plans, turned, turned into a safety issue.
I totally understand. I mean.
And believe me, if we had our opportunity.
Your original prop, prop, your original proposal had it north of, of the businesses, both mine and, and Mr. Burns. And, and we recognize that. And, you know, IDOT has come back and said, "No, they prefer to do it this way." As you saw, Lee said, Mr. Burns, they, you know, the, the horse is out of the barn.
Yeah, I probably should.
But possibly, if, if, if there's any opportunity for you to go back to IDOT and.
To your point, Mr. Toland.
You know, I, once, I, I can understand. The one thing that I don't understand is that it seemed to me, from the first meeting that I attended, that this was all about bike paths and being able to, to cross the street from the River Walk and the whole bit. Once that got squashed, then why not just leave it the way it is?
Well.
Because that was the original intent, was it not?
It was part of the original intent.
So, that's what confuses me a little bit, you know?
Right, it was a dual thing. We, we were talking about. We were talking about, so the bike plan was actually formulated, like, I don't remember, 2005, something like that, a long time ago. And then, as we were talking about conditions on the road, how do I put it? The bike plan was remembered, and so we paired the two. But you're right, the bike plan was a very integral part of the proposal from day one, absolutely.
Anyway...
But, Mr. Tolan, before you leave the podium, while the horse has left the barn, the people who saddle the horse, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and the Illinois Department of Transportation does not saddle that horse without our state representatives and state senators chiming in. So, this may come out of left field for many of us, but my suggestion's going to be, and I'm happy to make these calls myself, contact Representative Anderson, Senator McConaughey, Senator Obewais, Representative Fortner, and the others to say, we find ourselves in a pickle, can you assist? Our leverage, I think, has been rendered leverageless. Others perhaps might be able to assist us. I don't know.
This additional...
There's no disrespect to IDOT, it's just...
I guess I have a question about this. You guys were talking about this modified Phase 1 study, okay? So, my understanding is that you have to do more thorough or additional study on the project? What exactly is, are you paying for this $14,000 for this modified study? Is it possible that the further study of the situation would uncover something that would tell IDOT that maybe this isn't a good idea?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Babica, can you explain that in engineering terms? Or better yet, terms even I can understand?
The modified Phase 1 report that was approved by the city council back in February was an ad hoc study that IDOT really had a lack of defined requirements for what was needed for inclusion within the report, which is what our consultant and SEMCOM were able to produce and answer those questions. The abbreviated project report really is basically that, which is answering some routine but mandatory questions that comply with various state, federal, and county statutes, such as stormwater requirements, because it is a modification to the existing approved contract. So, there has to be an archaeological survey, for example, where an archaeologist has to certify that there is no significant architectural remains within the roadway. There is another one for ensuring that there is appropriate hiring within the Equal Employment Opportunity Act and ADA requirements. So, basically, it's going through the list of specifications that IDOT has to adhere to for all their projects to ensure that they are complying with various federal, state, and county ordinance and statutes. They are taking the information that's been developed by the city's vendor, contractor, and putting it into the standardized format now for the state of Illinois for their, lack for a better word, archives.
Mr. Tolan, does that help?
Yeah. Once again, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Hearing me out.
No, absolutely, anytime. Mr. Burns, is there anyone else besides, before I recognize Mr. Burns for a second time?
I assume there wasn't.
And just for your safety, Rob, there's no relationship between us, you spell your name differently.
I can make sure of that.
Thank you for that.
I just wanted to pick up on the last suggestion you made, Mr. Burns.
With a U.
With a U. It seems like you should, the question I was going to ask is, if there's any of you that are sitting here today that would like to help me, shall we say, convince IDOT, because I agree with Tom's recent comment, that everybody was in agreement last time, so I don't, I'm frustrated, but I don't blame you at all. That doesn't mean I should give up. I mean, if it's stupid, it's stupid. So, I would ask anyone here who feels like they would like to assist me to call me or contact me or let me know somehow in the next day. And Kevin, I'd like to take you up on your suggestion. I don't know how to do that, I'm not a political animal, but I can learn.
I think you've learned quite well, Mr. Burns.
Maybe Holton Mifflin could help us, too. I didn't realize exactly where they were, you know, how strong their feelings are, but...
I think it's as simple as making a phone call to our state reps and senators, saying, we respect the partnership we have with IDOT, we understand their engineering standards, we had our own ideas, unfortunately, we're not meeting in the middle on this, can you take a look at this as well?
Yeah, and keep in mind, it's not all or none.
Exactly.
It's north and south, right? We're all clear on it. It's not all or none. It's north should, we're all saying, north's got to be done, and it's going to be done. But south doesn't have to be done. If it ain't broke, what, was it Hans in the last meeting? The engineers say, if it ain't broke, you know, don't fix it. And I think that's what we're dealing with here. So, I appreciate your suggestion, I'd like to take you up on that.
Absolutely.
So, I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah, send me a text tomorrow and...
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. Alderman Kilburg first, then Cummings, then Bruno.
I think that we're in agreement that some type of pushback might be appropriate, and I guess I would entertain a suggestion that either staff or the mayor draft a letter with the unanimous support of the council, that we'd ask IDOT to reconsider their decision and to review our proposal, and that based on testimony that we received here this evening that is placing an, the likelihood is very great that it'll place an undue burden on our businesses, and that, you know, I think as a council, I think that we could support that letter, going back to IDOT, and I would agree that with the mayor, that we contact our elected officials in Springfield and petition their support in communicating with IDOT those feelings as well.
So, are you ready to make the city write the letter to all of the representatives?
I would suggest that we draft a letter back to IDOT and then copy the elected officials involved, and that as a council and as businesses in the community that are impacted, that we contact those elected officials and ask them also to contact IDOT.
Alderman Cummings?
I find myself in complete agreement with Alderman Kilburg.
If you want to order DVDs at this moment?
Yeah.
That's all you got to say?
That's all I'm going to say, that's exactly what I was going to say.
It's actually partially emotional, isn't it? It's kind of an emotional moment. It's just like the Billboard Awards with you and him. Alderman, Bruno.
I am going to go back to horses and barns. Maybe if you can, Mr. Babica, if you can maybe make sure I'm understanding this right. We took some hard measurements of the roadbed width, and we documented some roadbed areas that were less than the state minimum for four lanes. Once that is, am I right in thinking, once that number is known and public, they're obliged, they can't put a substandard lane? And would that be correct?
I'm already there. Good question.
I was kind of hoping the city attorney might bail me out on that one.
Well, if it's...
The state can, for lack of a better word, grant itself exemptions or variance, which is, the reason why I can state that unequivocally is that that was one of the variances that we were looking at very early in this project, because the state mandated a five-foot bike lane width, and that after looking at the various widths, we would only be able to do a four-foot bike lane, which is allowed by the state with an accepted variance issued by IDOT for the road segment. So, is it theoretically possible that the state could grant itself its own variance?
I see.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. The other item, I forget who brought it up, the, it was mentioned a safety head... I certainly get the inconvenience with traffic stacking past a driveway, but someone mentioned a safety issue with people coming and going. I'm not sure I understand what that safety issue would be.
Is that what was me asking?
Mr. Tolan, you're a regular now, man, this is great.
Yeah, I should have stayed home tonight.
Where is home, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, I live in Batavia, actually.
Welcome.
So, yeah, I mean, the way we see it is that, right now, we've got four lanes, two going north, two going south. We have a considerable amount of truck traffic. Most of that truck traffic is coming from the south. Okay, so you've got a 60, 70-foot trailer parked in the left-hand lane, trying to turn into our, into our drive. So, if you can picture, the truck is easing up, he's looking for the address, right? And I'm coming out of the drive, I know he's going to stop and turn into the facility so I can go. And I go in the left lane and head north. Let's fast forward to three lanes. Now, my lane to go north is on the far side of the truck. I don't see the traffic that's blocked, being blocked by that truck, therefore creating a safety hazard.
I see, thank you.
Okay. Then the other thing is, there's more. You know, we envision the stacking of cars, which is going to create, you know, people are going to be impatient. They just got off of work. They've been working 10, 12 hours, they want to get out of there and go home, so you're going to have people taking chances that normally they wouldn't take because they're sitting there longer. And the wait there now is less than desirable. You know, just envisioning that traffic being stacked up even more is what we're seeing and what we're envisioning, so hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Simontian?
Just a point of clarification. I'm assuming that we're not going to submit new plans simultaneous to contacting representatives?
Very expensive.
And we send the plans in, they come back, so, okay, fine, we'll go back to the other plan, and now the task force is going to come up with another $14,000 to submit the next set of plans. So, the question I have is, is there a plan to, do we make calls, give it X amount of time, then start working on the plan? I mean, is...
Mr. Babica, I'll take a stab at this, but my assumption is we can prepare a letter and have that faxed to IDOT tomorrow, that's not an issue. We can also have that similarly faxed to all state representatives' offices and senators' offices tomorrow, that's not a problem. I don't know how to bridge that gap between the other issue. And the city attorney's not going to bail you out on this one, either.
No, he's not. That would be a political issue of the elected officials to direct senior staff at IDOT to either suspend the project, table the project, or put the brakes on it until this gets resolved. IDOT, I had a meeting with the district engineer on Friday, again, about unrelated issue, and when I asked him, knowing full well that this was coming, how and who should be contacted at IDOT, he informed me that they have a new web browser application, that they have been directing people to make their wishes or desires or complaints known to IDOT, and that this way they can actually track and hold the employees accountable for ensuring that these questions have been asked or answered. I can give that webpage address now if you'd so like.
Slowly and clearly, that'd be great.
It is www.idot.illinois.gov.
Illinois spelled out.
Illinois spelled out. And that brings you to the IDOT homepage. Then you would click the tab, About IDOT, and then click the tab, Contact Us, because putting a Contact Us button on their homepage would be too easy.
Richard, I have, I'm not going to bail you out, but I'm going to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
When this study was done, the widths of the roadway from Fabian north were of different dimensions, correct? They weren't all substandard.
Right. Correct. The most dramatic substandard segment was between Peck and Forest View, where the average width was less than 35 feet wide.
North of this area in question, the commercial area, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I would submit that IDOT doesn't necessarily have to reject a four-lane section en masse. They can do it based upon those dimensions. And certainly, they haven't done the measurements, because I travel that road a lot. If you go down in Batavia, the width of 31, south of Fabian, to Wilson, is as narrow as any stretch in Geneva. And I assume that they're going to repave that as well?
The important differential between south of Fabian and north of Fabian is the projected traffic counts through 2040 conducted by Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. The road diet concept basically has a cap, you have to have less than, I believe it's 19,000 cars per day through a particular road segment, and the southern, South 31, South Fabian, is already in excess of that. Therefore, the road diet concept would not be even feasible or practical within that roadway.
No, but my point was for them to continue with a four-lane cross-section if it was a substandard road. I think that was the point. Would they legally do that?
Legally, they're okay.
And I'd say, they've got to do it.
Self-exemption. Anyone else in the audience, comments, questions?
It, please, go ahead. Sorry. It did occur to me as we were going through this presentation that we kind of sandbagged the two newly-elected aldermen by not, I should have provided you a copy of the road diet task force findings.
You know, I was at the public meeting at Public Works, and I was at the February meeting, so I feel okay.
The final recommendation was a little...
I was there, too, and I heard Mr. Burns before speak, I'm good.
But as part of that report to IDOT, all the public comments that were received, both at those meetings, at the council meeting, as well as online, were submitted to IDOT, all the pros and the cons, in an unedited format, so they were privy to all the statements made throughout the life of this project, including Hans, who submitted his after the project was submitted to IDOT. That was also included into the project.
Well, it's my assumption, knowing that IDOT are huge fans of both the Chronicle and the Daily Herald, and I'm not sure of the Tribune's here in it, we'll make certain that they're well aware of the debate, perhaps even send them a copy of the video, but you and I can work on this letter tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay. Great suggestion. Alderman Burkhardt?
I'm sorry, could I get clarification? You said, so, south of Fabian, for Batavia, what will IDOT be doing? It's already, it's already above that 19,000 cars a day, so they can't do a road diet there. But it's substandard. Is that substandard? Because we're hearing that that sounds more narrow than some Geneva spots.
That's my anecdotal observation.
So, just of interest, I guess.
Yeah, I cannot speak for the widths of south of Fabian.
Will they be doing it at the same ti... Would they do it all at once, the same time they were starting?
I believe that the resurfacing project does begin at Third Street and extends through into Fabian, or into Batavia.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Great discussion, thank you.
Very lively. Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor, folks.
All right, just turn in the lights.
The motion's on item 9B, the off-chance here we forgot. Motion was offered by Singer, seconded by Bruno, to seek the reimbursement. We will schedule this accordingly so that we're not tripping over each other in our communications, but roll call, roll call vote is appropriate. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Greg Mladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecki?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Aye.
Brown Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Jarrett Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes and one absence. Okay. Item number 9C, Consider Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2014, 2015 Fourth Quarter Goals Status Report.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Singer makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the report submitted? And this was, of course, to... And this was, of course, to make a road diet on Williamsburg Avenue from St. Street to... A simple voice vote, sufficient, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item ten, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in aggregate for our consideration this evening.
Bills for payment, total three million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the total, or the individual items that add up to that dollar amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city's website.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, AKA Brown. Did he write that down for you?
I've, I've remembered it over these last two years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Marks, any questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkard?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Item ten passes with nine affirmative votes and one absence. Whew, boy, we jumped down to item number thirteen, new business. Any new business this evening from anyone in the audience tonight?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Singer?
Thank you, sir. I neglected to wish my dear colleague Alderman Radecki a happy birthday last, last week. He reached a big number, finally. Gonna be qualifying.
Coming from you, that really hurts, Ron.
Well said, sir. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Kilburg?
I think we'd be remiss not to, uh, reflect a little bit on the sacrifice of Lance Corporal Medina from East Aurora that lost her life on a relief mission in Nepal. Uh, it was mentioned today at the county government exercise by, uh, uh, Mr. Lawson. And, uh, again, I think that, uh, her sacrifice, uh, her commitment to, uh, her community and her country should be recognized. And, uh, I noticed this afternoon that, uh, you'll notice that Governor Rahn has asked that all flags, uh, uh, be flown at half-staff, uh, in Illinois in memory of Lance Corporal Medina, a twenty, uh, twenty-ten graduate of East Aurora High School.
Well said. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Alderman Marks, Alderman Simoni, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take just a one-minute break, folks, and we'll jump into our special committee of the whole meeting. Good evening, folks, and welcome to the special committee of the whole meeting. Again, let the record show that all the aldermen, save for Alderman Sino, are present this evening. We have only one item of business tonight, and that item is item two A, consider request from Ron Onesti of Onesti Entertainment for city contribution related to costs for city services, including but not limited to police and fire for proposed concerts July seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, two thousand and fifteen. We, in order to discuss this matter, what, we have a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Maladra, seconded by Simoni. Not that you couldn't tell, but since this is a committee of the whole meeting, we'll be a little bit more flexible, because last meeting was so strict. So, this matter is on the floor. How would the committee prefer to engage? We can have a brief presentation by Mr. Onesti, we can begin with whatever you guys like. What's your preference? Alderman Simoni?
I'll tee it up. Thank you, uh, Mayor. To give a little background, I've, uh, I've been extremely instrumental in this with, uh, Mr. Onesti. As I mentioned last week in our committee of the whole meeting in new business, I gave an overview of the scenario and said that we may revisit this somewhere in the future. I had no idea the future was one week away, but, uh, here we are. We have been, uh, trying to, uh, work on getting entertainment in, uh, in town here. And, uh, Ron has, uh, obviously is a, is a promoter of entertainment. He owns the Arcata Theater, and, uh, he's been promoting for many years. And he is, uh, offered on many occasions from many different communities to bring his entertainment venue to their, uh, their backyard. And, uh, uh, he has been so gracious through his relationship with the Tri-Cities, uh, with some members of the city council, myself, is to open that opportunity up for us this year, uh, here in Geneva. Part of what Ron was looking for from the city was not only in-kind services, uh, to help support this effort, uh, but also an opportunity to serve spirits, uh, and an opportunity to, uh, extend the Sunday night venue from eight o'clock till maybe ten or eleven o'clock. Ron, being the type of person that he is, and want, doesn't want conflict, he withdrew the spirit part of the equation and withdrew the extended time part of the equation. But, um, I believe, uh, that this part of the equation, uh, we should consider for a number of reasons. One is, um, I don't know what the, the city ordinance is. I don't, I don't know if the city has an ordinance with regards to in-kind services. I am not a fan of separating profit from not-for-profit. And I believe that, a couple things. First of all, those decisions should be made on what's in the best interest of the city, not necessarily who's putting on the event and what kind of impact, uh, both subjective and objective, that venue has towards the city. And two is, uh, Ron is willing to put at risk between two and three hundred thousand dollars to make an attempt to see if this will work and be successful in our town. And personally, I think that we should do everything in our power to help foster that along in year one, and then reconsider all these, if that, if it becomes a future event, to then look at these, but not to put potential roadblocks when someone's willing to make those kinds of investments, uh, and put that kind of money at risk, uh, to benefit Geneva and potential entertainment in the future. So that's a little, that's a little background, uh, on this. Ron can speak to the actual event, uh, the three days and the, and where he is with regards to, uh, the approval process, because this has been one, uh, ugly journey, because we not only have the city of Geneva, we have the city of King County, and we also have the Forest Preserve. And if it's, if you think it's difficult getting through one government agency on this, try three, and then also put some time constraints around it. So that's basically it. I'm looking forward to vigorous dialogue regarding this matter, um, 'cause I've already had some prior to this meeting. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Would the committee prefer to hear from Mr. Onesti? And for the benefit of all of you in the audience, and if any of you had the chance to download the packet for tonight's meeting, there is significant material related to this topic that all of you are privy to, including in that material is a timeline regarding our discussions when they first began with Mr. Onesti and Onesti Entertainment. There's also copies of correspondence from other agencies. There's a few emails that were shared with us and asked that we share with the community at large through the public process. So all that's on the table tonight, again, for what it's worth, all we're really considering tonight is voting on the, as Alderman Simoni stated, the in-kind services. However, I know there's a lot of issues that want to be raised and should be raised, and by all means, we are more than happy to encourage said issues to be discussed. So Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For myself, um, I don't know if any, if the rest of the council feels this, feels this way. There seems to be a, a number of things coming at us in fairly short order, kind of fragmented. I think I would appreciate if, uh, Mr. Onesti's amenable, just to catch us up on, you know, where, you know, where the event stands today, you know, how it's to be conducted, so I, I just have a better grasp of, of what's going on.
Mr. Onesti, welcome. And just for the record, Mr. Onesti, if I could trouble you, just state your name, spelling of your last name, and whom you're representing this evening.
Good evening. Ron Onesti, O-N-E-S-T-I, from Onesti Entertainment Corporation in St. Charles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for allowing me this time. To give you a little bit of, of a background of the whole situation, um, ten years ago, actually next week, I came, uh, to St. Charles and took over the Arcata Theater from a practically shuttered building to now we're pretty much the number-one live music venue in the Midwest, family-friendly entertainment, very proud of. Twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, I began a festival in the city of Chicago, down in the Little Italy area there, that we, uh, continues today as one of, an award-winning outdoor festival. About, uh, see, it's, I believe, eleven years ago, I began another cult, uh, educa- not, uh, culturally, uh, what is the word? There's a special word I'm looking for, but there's a cultural event, this Italian festival in the village of Addison, that has grown to be, um, a very, very well-attended, uh, very wonderful event that the village of Addison is, uh, very much in favor of. Three years ago, I brought an event to, um, or a concept to the city of Elgin, which has been very, very successful, not one issue, not one challenge, and very well supported by the community. And that's the specific, um, uh, item that I'm bringing to the table here, the, the model that we did in, in Elgin the past two and a half years. And it's an outdoor concert situation. Basically, it's taking my concept we do at the Arcata Theater and just, uh, expanding it to an outdoor, uh, venue. So where we stand today is a situation where, whereby in talking to many of my customers from the Geneva area, saying, you know, "We need entertainment, we love entertainment. What, is there anything you can do to bring to town?" And I did that, and I drove around and I sought different areas. And I looked at a, a beautiful town, I adore the town, the city, and, um, uh, in all the areas that we are considering, considering parking, tra- uh, uh, traffic and, uh, and other amenities like the Metro and so forth, and the actual layout, um, the Gunner Anderson Forest Preserve seemed to be the best one, uh, that would solve the, not solve the issues, but, but welcome the template that we established in the Elgin area for, in the last couple, two, three years. So, um, where it stands now, I've been meeting with, uh, I've met with Mary McKittrick, I'm very, uh, with the, with the county, with the Forest Preserves, going back and forth. And basically, where we sit right now is a, I feel very confident where we sit right now, as far as the people wanting what I'm hoping to offer, uh, to you folks here in Geneva. The, um, the county has, uh, voted to approve, uh, allowing me to do this, pending approval of the other agencies, of course. And we're working very closely with Monica and the Forest Preserves with regards to the actual layout. I have spoken to the, uh, county sheriff, who is in, in favor, who's spoken to the police departments of Elgin and Addison, and they've given me, given me rounding, uh, support with, with that. You know, the concept here is, is not just, I'm not just looking for a place, you know, to do this, because I do this already. I'm looking to help, um, the city of Geneva foster the concept of, of live entertainment, and so much so that I'm branding this event Mig Fest, which is Music in Geneva Music Festival. And it's something, it's some, kind of an odd, odd name, nothing odder than Bonnaroo or Lollapalooza, that people didn't know what it was about. So I wanted to give it that kind of a thing that truly branded it and attached the city of Geneva to this. I understand, and I'm very, very sensitive to the issues that are at hand with regards to being, um, aware of the concerns of the community. I'll give you one example. We had a tremendous fireworks show the last two years in the city of Elgin, and, um, without any request from, I'm sorry, the city of Addison, and without any request from the city or anything, the, the next day, we had a, we had a big wind that actually brought some of the, um, the, uh, it blew some of the paper, you know, that comes from the fireworks, onto some roofs and, well, like I said, without any prodding from the city, the, the event was on Sunday night. On Monday morning, I had ten crews of two go three blocks and go roof to roof, sweeping the roofs off, because that's, I'm very, very concerned about that kind of a thing. And, uh, they were very, very pleased with that. I typically go door-to-door around the community and introduce myself, give them my personal cell number. I gotta be a lunatic to do this, but I do that, because, you know, and I, I know police departments and that kind of thing, uh, and fire departments get those kind of calls. I throw myself out there and say, "I'm the guy doing it, I'm the guy that can fix it, so I'm here for you." And that's, that's kind of where we're at with the, um, as far as the approval process goes. As far as the event itself, um, you know, again, some of the concerns with the community, I know there was a, an event on Saturday that was, that I was made aware of just recently with regards to the Shakespeare, I believe it's Shakespeare in the Park? Is that what it's called? Shakespeare in the Park, which, I'm a big Shakespeare fan, honestly, uh, and, um, and I, I think it's a great, great thing, was not aware that was happening. So, you know, I, I, I phoned, uh, I phoned the chairman, I believe, uh, his title is, and a couple other members of the commu- of the committee, and in finding out the time and the concern, I originally asked and applied for a four P.M., to start at four P.M., but knowing, finding out that they, they start at six P.M., I'm prepared to change the time to an eight P.M. start, which would accomplish two things. Number one, it would, um, it would thwart any noise factor with regards to the Shakespeare folks, and also, it would, um, by the time, uh, people come to park, uh, the Shakespeare attendees will already take up the parking spaces close to the area. And I know this for a fact, not only, mainly because of my experience, but also, this event is a, um, this event is a reserved seating situation. You know, when you have a general admission thing, and you have, you have, uh, bands that people are big fans of, they'll get there at, at ten in the morning and stand in line and park early and take up, you know, and that's not what this is. You have a reserved seat, and it's, it makes it very organized, it makes it very clean, it makes it very neat, and it allows people to get there, it allows people to go to dinner before, and get there an hour before the show starts. It allows people to, um, take part in the retail part. And that was one of the things that looked really, really good to me, and one of the reasons why I did select the Gunner Anderson property, is, you know, for a couple of, uh, other reasons besides the fact that, from a logistics standpoint, um, it looked great. I mean, it, it, it had the, the layout was, was proper. But also, number one, it had, does have parking. I believe we set us approximately seven hundred or so parking spots, which in my experience and, and the type of crowds that I'm looking to draw, should be more than fine, notwithstanding the fact that we are, we have other, uh, options, we're working with the city on other locations and shuttle buses, and if that's the case, again, knowing, again, being a, a, a reserved seat situation, a pre-sell situation, I not only will know, for the most part, how many people are coming, but I sell my own tickets, I don't use Ticketmaster or anything like that. Why is that important? Because I have the email address and the contact information to every single person, every single ticket buyer. So, uh, if I have to direct certain people or direct the, the, the whole group to park here, park there, do anything like that, I have that ability. So, uh, as I mentioned before, uh, with regards to the Shakespeare, uh, issue, um, I would, you know, would not consider to do anything that would, uh, uh, stand in the way of them being successful, not only, uh, by, by changing the parameters of the event, but also welcome them as a, uh, part of a sponsor of this event, or, or welcome them on our site. In other words, to help, I'd even help them promote their event, because I think it's just great, it's a great thing. So, you know, so that's, that's the one issue, and there's other issues, like, it's the nine-one-one center that has to be open all night, it's the, uh, the coroner's office that has to have access, um, Kaincom needs to have access, um, uh, not access, but, uh, understanding, and I've been talking to her, the young lady that's, uh, the deputy director there, with regards to, um, uh, any type of concerns. So we're really trying to do all my homework and address, you know, um, all the issues here, but, you know, again, I want to make it clear that I'm really a big part of this, a big part of this, because, I mean, I don't know how to say this without being, you know, I mean, if I wanted to do this, I, I could go in several other places and do it, places that know me real well, and it's easy, and I can get it done, frankly, St. Charles, if I really wanted to do it. But there's been a lot of, you know, uh, requests for me to, to try to do something here, and I think the location of Gunner Anderson is a great location for two other reasons. Number one, it's obviously, as you know, very close walking proximity to the downtown, Third Street, and other businesses, and the businesses will benefit. Uh, there's been several economic impacts... There's been several economic impact studies with regards to my events and, and the Arcata Theater, and there is definite positive economic impact that happens in local businesses. And also with regards, going back to the parking issue and any traffic issues, really, really gonna push the, the fact that Metro is, is right there, right across the street. And again, having the, the ability to communicate with these customers, you know, we're letting them know, park somewhere else on the train line and just take the train in. So, you know, I'm trying very, very hard to not only address the community issues, but the big part here is, is looking at this as a future, as, as a future growth, something that can grow in Geneva, something that the community can enjoy. I mean, even as much as you have your, what is it, Geneva's Got Talent, is that what I see out there? Even, you know, I know the, the, one of the prizes that they would perform at Swedish Days, but why not opening for, like, for example, on Saturday night, we've got a couple bands you may or may not have heard about before, Cool in the Gang, The Commodores, and The Temptations, you know, that kind of a thing on Saturday night, on Friday night, a little bit more of a classic rock, kind of a foreigner maybe, we have a Whitesnake from the eighties, I'm sure you're all very familiar, have their cassettes in your car. And on Sunday, probably a country, because country seems to be a big family thing, and we're very, you know, it's very popular with us. So again, it's a, it's a music festival to hit family-friendly and various types of music, and something I think can grow, and I welcome as much community input, not, well, input, of course, but involvement with regards to organizations, ways that there's, maybe there's a scholarship program in there, maybe there's a talent show, or maybe, I mean, there's all kinds of ways that I believe the city of Geneva can really benefit from this. So I thank you all so much for allowing me to speak, and that's pretty much where we're at. I will breathe now.
Again, I'll ask the committee at their preference, would you rather have questions and comments from the dais first, or the audience first?
Well, the audience.
Audience, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, any comments or questions you'd like to ask of the committee and/or Mr. Onesti?
I have comments, but no questions.
Comments, Mr. Vitang, welcome.
Tim Vitang, 112 Ridge Lane, I'm chairman of the Geneva Cultural Arts Commission. We have a number of commissioners here this evening, they would just maybe raise their hands, see? We're, there's nine of us, so we're missing a couple who couldn't make it. While I don't, I'm not a Whitesnake fan, I have seen Deep Purple 40-some years ago, live, so that kind of dates me, so I might be the demographics they're looking for. The main thing we're concerned about would be the traffic and the parking, but I want to comment on some things, and that is that the Arts Commission was created by city ordinance, and it's guided by the city of Geneva rules and regulations. We receive no financial, no direct financial assistance from the city, while our budget is, give or take, $70,000 per year, and that has to be approved by the city council when you do your annual budget approval. We receive no taxpayer funds, so we raise all of our money ourselves. And we do that through our main fundraiser, which is, was just held a couple of months ago, Eat Your Art Out, prior to that, it was Dancing with Geneva Stars, both of which have been extremely successful beyond anything we anticipated. But we also do it through sponsorships from businesses for our events, some admission fees, and the generous support of quite a few hundreds of volunteers for our various events. And because of that, our two most popular summer events have been free in July, and those are the summer concerts in the park, held at the River Park, and that's held, that's been held for a number of years, on three Sunday evenings in July. There's a variety of programs at the River Park Amphitheater. This year, we have Radio Mystery Theater on one Sunday, the following week is a country western group, and after that, an Irish music group. The crowds vary for that program, anywhere from 100 to maybe 300 people. The other event is Shakespeare in the Park, and for over 40 years, Shakespeare in the Park, over 40 years ago, Shakespeare in the Park was a very popular event, produced locally with a lot of volunteers, some of you may have acted in it, I'm sure some of you attended it years ago, and for various reasons, it, it faded away. When the Arts Commission held its first meeting, that was one of the events that everybody jumped on and said, "Yes, we have to do it," the other being the Film Fest, and I think its success can speak for itself. Shakespeare in the Park was the first event we held, and when people heard about it, they were really excited, because people throughout the tri-cities participated in it. This is, I think, our ninth year, correct me if I'm wrong, for Shakespeare in the Park? Yes. It's had, been held on the same Saturday in July, this year it's scheduled for the 18th. As with any recurring event, date equity is very important in building an audience, and we were concerned when we heard about the potential competition that we would be having, not so much for the audience, but for the issues of, of sound and parking. Our audience looks forward to this, and they plan for it, we have sponsors that have committed many months in advance for it. Island Park is probably one of the most favorite venues in the city, and we have seen the audience grow from about 150 people the first year to 800 people last year. The only year we saw a decline was when we moved it to Third Street because of the construction work that was being done at Island Park a little over two years ago. There are a number of events throughout the community that are held, and I kind of just went through real quick, aside from the cultural arts, music events, and Shakespeare in the Park, we have the Orion Ensemble, which performs four times throughout the community in October and May. The Park District has Wednesday evenings at Island Park throughout the summer with emphasis on July. Geneva Commons, Wednesday and Sunday evenings at the Carolin, and the crowds there will vary from 100 to as much as 500 people, depending on the, the group that's playing that evening. Swedish Days, there's always entertainment in the evening. Festival of the Vine has entertainment on its stage. Fox Valley Folk Festival, which if you enjoy folk music, is one of the premier folk festivals in the country, held Labor Day weekend at Island Park. We have the Outdoor Music in Geneva, OMG, that the city cosponsors with businesses throughout the community. We have Steeple Walk, which is music held in four churches on the Sunday during Christmas Walk, and we're almost at a point where we sell out the tickets every year. You've got Kane County Cougars has music a few nights during the year, which draws big crowds, and I'm thankful it's not always fireworks living nearby. And we have the Kane County Fair, which also has entertainment at their grandstands. And so many businesses, Fiora's, Even Flow, Graham's 318, and I hate to mention a couple, but there's so many that, that have it throughout the year. So there's a lot of opportunities, and we've always tried to ensure that we didn't compete with some of the larger events and festivals, and from that standpoint, when we first heard about the three-day proposal that was out there, we became very concerned, obviously. The music would be, or the sound emanating from a place maybe a half a mile away could be quite loud coming up the river. Since then, it's my understanding, and I have spoken with Mr. Onesti, as he mentioned, that we, that the stage that were originally was pointing north towards Island Park, the layout was going to be moved, so that would be pointing south, which would, which would eliminate some of the music, but that was prior to my conversation with him earlier today. And he is correct in offering to adjust the times, and in speaking with the commissioners, we think that for the, the issue of sound, that, that would work. We're usually starting to tear down by 8:00, because it's starting to get dark and there are no lights at Island Park, so we have to work around that restriction. And then in addition to the parking, with the change in the start times and the fact that it's reserved seating as opposed to festival seating, the parking should not be as big of an issue, because our people will come earlier. They do start coming by 4:00, 4:30, there's quite a few people in the park, they kind of make it a Ravinia-type event for them, and we do have some businesses that are there as vendors. Mr. Olson here sells sandwiches and snacks, and we have ice cream and root beer and so on, so it works out really well. We're hoping this year to maybe draw even more than 800, and I think with those changes it would work. Our Sunday night event is up at the River Park Amphitheater, and that's probably far enough away, and with the music pointing to the south, I don't see that that would be a big problem, at least for this year, we'll, we'll see how it goes. But we hope in your deliberations, irrespective of all the other issues that are before you on this matter, that you'll keep in mind the, the issue of sound and parking, and do everything you can to ensure that a truly beloved event such as Shakespeare in the Park is not compromised. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Vince, welcome, sir. Now, you have to spell your last name, just.
Hi, everybody. Vic Portincasso, 2717 Black Monroe, Geneva, Illinois. Some of you know me, some of you don't, I'm also a commissioner on the Cultural Arts Commission.
Yeah, I believe the clerk just had, just a moment of fear because of your last name.
No, I, I know who he is. P-O-R-T-I-N-C-A-S-O.
Just put VP, see what happens. We'll track him down.
VP like the vice president.
Yeah, you're better than that.
There's one reason, there's one reason why I serve on the Cultural Arts Commission, okay? And that is because I'm passionate about the arts, and the other reason that I'm on the Cultural Arts Commission is because we do whatever we can to help the businesses in Geneva, and that's, that's what we really want to do, that's what I want to do, okay? I'm a big fan of Mr. Onesti here. He is, he is, does, he puts his, anybody in the entertainment business puts their heart into it, as does Mr. Onesti here. My biggest concern, once again, is like, is that we don't interfere with the other, with the other events that are in, in the city. As far as Shakespeare goes, I put a lot of blood into that one, I'm one of the original organizers of, of the revival of Shakespeare. I also happen to be an actor in it too, but, anyway. I just want to remind you also, too, that, you know, we want to consider Shakespeare in Park, we want to consider the Cultural Arts Commission, everything that they've done to, to help, help the city and everything, and all the blood and sweat that we put, we put towards it, because we are, we are all very in love with the city, and we want, we want to see it succeed. So the only other thing I would say is, it'd be great if, it's a great idea, it'd be great if we could do something where, you know, it could, work as a big festival where a lot of the city could, could, could benefit from it. One of the things I, I, I know, I know Mike is, is involved in this, and I'm glad to see that, because I'm glad to see Mike's business succeeding because of this. I own a business myself, I know how hard it is to pull profits from a business, it's almost impossible. You do a lot of work, and you, you go home at night and you don't really have the money that everybody thinks you have. But anyway, I don't know if I'm going off on a tangent here, I just want everybody to consider that. I know, Mary, it's probably going to be very difficult to, to, to grant the, the funds and stuff for it, especially since we, we did a survey a while ago, and people love the arts, but they just don't want to pay for them. So all I can say is, I am not against it, okay, I am for it, I would like to see, what I would like to see, personally, what I would like to see is, I would like to see more people involved in, in the process, and making sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and that we can make it even more successful, so that we can make it successful for all the businesses in Geneva. And this is coming from a person who lives on the west side, does not live in the downtown. So I guess that's all I have to say, and I don't know if anyone wants to ask any questions, but I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Vince. Mr. Olson.
Michael Olson, 202 North Sixth Street in Geneva, I am the owner of Stockholms. Since I was referenced twice, I will just make it a point that you all know that I am a proud sponsor of Shakespeare in the Park, and have been for, I don't know how many years now.
Since the second year, I think it was.
Something like that. And we will be sponsoring Shakespeare Park again this year through my previous workings with Alderman Simmonian, I met Ron Onesti, and I have agreed to, through our liquor license, facilitate the sale of the alcohol at this festival, should it be approved. I look forward to working with Ron, the city, and everyone to see that both Shakespeare in Park and Mig Fest are successful.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? One moment, Mr. Singer, I'll just make sure that no one in the audience will turn to the dais, if there's no objection, Alderman Singer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Onesti. What provisions have you made if there is a, some inclement weather comes upon you on one or two of the evenings? What, what's your, what's your outlook on this?
Well, I don't know how religious I was before all of this, but I tell you what, now I sure as heck am. No, I, you know, obviously, this is, and that was one of the reasons why I wanted to bring up my previous experience with the outdoor events, is that that is something that, believe me, I live it each and every day. Pardon me. One of the things that I'm somewhat fortunate over, maybe some other situation that would put this on, is I, I begin my sales of, how can I put this? I, the seating chart that I use at this outdoor festival, the foundation of it, because obviously it's much bigger, but the foundation of it is the same that I have at the Arcata Theater. So should, and that's why we watch exactly what's sold, and those first thousand seats are, you know, are very, very, watch very closely. So I have the opportunity, should I be, should I be able to make the decision a day before, let's say, maybe even less than that, I can move the entire thing from a performance standpoint to the Arcata Theater. That's one situation. The other situation is, if it rains, we get wet. I mean, not to be facetious, but we have, there's insurance in place, and that's just like any, that's like Swedish Days and anything else, you know? We have, we're very, very sensitive to safety issues with regards to that, we know the plans, we work very closely with the fire departments, and know, you know, at the end of the day, they are the boss, and even if there's a situation where it's an electrical storm, or it's not even raining, but it's once lightning hits the air, more often than not, we have to pull the people offstage. I respect that, and we understand that, we work very closely together, we're in communication, we all, I give everybody, all the, all the agencies, my own radios, and we're very close, you know, talking about that. So, you know, it's, we hold off, we wait, you know, but we, we do have plans in place for that.
A number of my constituents have asked me this question, which I will ask you. Why did you not seek out the use of the Kane County Fairgrounds?
Well, again, I actually, I touched on that earlier, I can, again, I'm not really, it's kind of a strange situation, sir, it's, I'm not necessarily looking for a place to do this, you know? It started with, with members of the community saying, you know, "We'd love to have what you do in Geneva," and I started that dialogue with, with Alderman Simmonian, with some other people, and it just kind of happened, and one of the main reasons was to, and I don't want to represent that this is for, I'm doing it for you guys, that's, I don't want to represent it that way, but I sincerely am telling you that that is part of it, you know, to bring the attention, I can easily do, I, I did things, I did a couple of concerts at the Kane County Fairgrounds and the Kane County Cougar Stadium, Alstrom Stadium, whatever that is, I'm sorry, pardon me. Anyway, we did that over there, you know? I could do that if I was looking for a place to, I'm not really looking to do this anywhere else, because I could, as I mentioned before. This was specifically a way to begin this type of entertainment, as Tim mentioned, you have many entertainment options already, but the stuff that I do specifically was a way to bring to the city of Geneva, not only to the city of Geneva, but to the downtown businesses. And that's, that's really why, honestly, that's the reason why, was to, to connect the Third Street and the downtown businesses to this, this event. I know it's kind of like, okay, what's, what are you getting out of this? I'm really not, I'm really not. If you, if you've been to the Arcata, if you've been to our shows, and you know, you know me, I mean, I'm really sincere with this, with this kind of stuff, and that's why I'm looking, and that's why I'm seeking some help, because it is, as Alderman Simmonian mentioned, it's a huge investment, you know, it's a huge, no matter, insurance or not, you know, just, just the time and effort and energy, it's a big thing. So, you know, we are asking for some relief. In the grand scheme of things, it's, you know, it doesn't compare to the, the investment that I'm making, plus the other expenses that have to do with, with the county and with the forest preserves. It's, it's, it's going to be a challenge, but it's one that I'm willing to take because of the support, it seems, the community has been. of the support, it seems, the community has been, even the mayor has mentioned to me how, you know, it would be cool, you know, unofficially, I guess, but it would be cool to have this kind of thing in Geneva, because it is, it really is. It's safe, it's clean, it's family-friendly, and I've never had one issue, police-wise, anything like that, you know? It's just, it's really, it's really a good thing.
Do you perceive this as being an annual event?
I do. I mean, I, I look for growth, I look for, as I mentioned before, more community involvement, you know? I mean, making, maybe making the Arts Commission part of it in some way. Maybe earlier in the day, it's a Shakespeare thing, and later on, it's, you know, there's ways of working together. Again, if you, if you look at the other examples that I brought up, where it's the city of Elgin or the village of Addison, you know, it's become, matter of fact, the village of Addison used to have their, their community days, was a big festival, and they had a carnival and it was a big deal. And it was a lot of money, a lot of risk. And my event got to be so, you know, again, family-friendly, safe and clean, the food was good, and I'm very particular in all that stuff, that they decided to just scrap their festival, and now I'm the official festival of Addison, even though they really have nothing to do with it, really no involvement with the running of it, anything like that. So, I do, I mean, if it's good for you and it's good for me, you know, if it's something that the community really doesn't want, for whatever reason, that's okay, you know? That's okay. But if they do want it, maybe we grow together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ron.
Yes, sir.
I'll go on record, I've been to your, the Fourth of July Elgin event, very well-run.
Thank you.
I didn't spend a dime outside of that, but, but that would get me into, you know, out of the gate. I mean, I think everyone wants this to work. Fabulous concept. And I can see this, one time out of the gate, you know, there's, there's going to be some rough edges. But what would you envision with downtown merchant cross-promotion over time, or what might you even integrate this year with, you know, advertising dinner specials?
Absolutely.
You know, you, you probably know a lot more about it than I do.
Yes, and, you know, again, we're really pushing the, the use of the Metro train, staying in, in downtown Geneva, or coming, coming earlier, you know? My marketing strategies and my marketing initiatives is very broad-based, you know, it's not just, it's not just the Tri-Cities, it's not just St. Charles, it's, you know, many of my customers, especially at the Arcata, come from so far away. And I think that's just such a positive, because, you know, as I mentioned before, I do my own ticketing, you know, we, we have a, my website, in nine months, hit, it's two millionth hit. Our eBlast, we have an eBlast of over 50,000 customers. Our Facebook pages have hit, we're, I believe, we're over 40,000 friends, or whatever you call those things. The fact is, oh, you're probably one of them.
Well, well, I, my Uncle Nick shares them often.
Uncle Nick, Bruno?
Nick, that's my uncle, yes.
Really? Oh, you know what, if, he's, what a, what a wonderful guy your Uncle Nick is. How old is he, like, 89?
Well, we can.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Talk that offline.
Sorry about that.
This is Olazorduck, you forgot, so it's amazing.
So, you would, and I'll just spew something out here to see if it, if it works. So, if our downtown restaurants created a Migfest special, would they be, be able to advertise that through your website?
100%, and that's why, you know, I welcome that. I'd meet with the chamber, I'd meet with every, anybody, as I said, I'd promote the Shakespeare event. I'd, absolutely, this is meant to be a cooperative initiative. I'm not trying to come in and do this thing and leave, you know, I'm meant, I'm trying to have this grow and be a cooperative initiative so that, you know, everybody's happy about it. I, I am, you know, we're all, wherever, wherever we're at in our careers, where I'm at in mine, you know, I just want to put on a show, make people happy and go home. I don't want to fight with anybody. So, you know, I want everyone to be, be happy and, you know, I'll put on the, I told them, I'd put on the tights, I don't care. I mean, whatever it takes. But sincerely, I, I love, I love the businesses. I'm there, I had my family there on Saturday, we, we come here quite a bit, and I would welcome all the business individually and as a whole to be a part of this.
Thank you on that. So, with the shifting of hours on Saturday, you said an eight o'clock start?
Mm-hmm.
Which would mean going till 11?
11:30 is the latest I would, I would go.
Okay. And you do, I know you do food service, you make a mean slider.
Yeah, thank you very much, yes.
So, what type of food would you have on premise?
Strictly my, my famous homemade meatballs, you know, that kind of thing, just really a couple of simple sandwiches, beer, wine, soft drinks, it's going to be very simple, possibly an ice cream thing, gelato kind of thing.
And our, our public safety officials, I expect someone to ask something specifically, but that's, that's been worked out in terms of we can secure it, we can control it, is that?
I mean, we've been meeting, I've met with Chief Mexon, I've met with everybody, and although, you know, we're waiting for final approvals on everything, I mean, we've had dialogue, and I'm very confident that, that, you know, all their, I mean, at the end of the day, you can approve all you want, but you give me all the approvals you want and the day of, the police chief says no, or the fire chief says no, it's no. So, it's really, you know, that kind of a thing. So, I'm very sensitive to that, that's why I've reached out to all the agencies, including the county sheriff, and he's, I've spoken to him personally on three occasions specifically about this, and he, you know, he's given me a verbal support at this point, and something in writing, including, you know, what the charges would be and what, what his take on it would be as far as what he, he would mandate as far as their coverage, because they would be the, looks like they would be the, the, the agency that would be the on-premise, as opposed to the Geneva Police or the Forest Reserve Police.
Those are all my questions at this point. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings?
I came to the Arcata to see Ira Glass before we went to, to the show, I think we went for dinner.
Yep.
Guessing we went for dinner somewhere. I'm pretty sure my company sponsors Cultural Arts, I can't keep track of everything that is sponsors, I know I've danced in Dancing with the Geneva Stars. I was pleasantly surprised tonight to see that the two groups have some agreements so far in place, and I'm cautiously optimistic that, that we can come to some agreement. And, and I appreciate the work that you guys have obviously done over the last 24 hours to come to some agreements. That's very nice to see. And I, and I want to see both continue, so I'm, I'm happy to see that, thank you.
Thank you. And I thank them for being so open-minded. I appreciate that very much.
Alderman Rodecky?
Well, thank you very much. Along with Alderman Cummings, I'm much in the same boat, I'm glad to hear that you're working with the Cultural Arts Commission and you've come to some agreement. Some of the things that I still have some concerns about, and, you know, we're just going to have to see what plays out. An event of this nature does not come without, it does come with some risk to the city. You know, when you move an event from eight o'clock, it starts late, there will be alcohol involved, it will run till 11:30, which means that it's probably not going to empty out the town till after midnight, 12:30 that day. You know, there are some associated risks that go along with that. You know, I'm not sure what the last train is out of Geneva on Friday and Saturday nights, someone had told me that they, they stopped running out of Geneva at 10:40 or 11:00, it probably will, 10:37, it probably will not accommodate the massive folks that you're, that you're contemplating may come to this event. So, you know, there's certainly some details and, and again, some risks. I'm very pleased to see what you're, you're working out and working with, everybody with this, and highly encourage you to do this. My position would be, though, that as far as in-kind services, that I would want to see how the first year's event went, have some experience with it, see if it did bring the benefits, see that it did go as smoothly as we are hoping that it will go, and then reconsider the matter. As you say, you would like to make this an annual event, and if it does go that well, and it's good for you, and it's good for the city, and we see how the first one goes, I would be willing to revisit it at that point to consider any in-kind donations, but I'd like a little track record with it probably before we do that. So, that'd be my position. Thank you.
Can I address that, or?
Oh, my homies.
I've been in touch with Metro, and we're working out a possibility, I mean, you know, again, it makes a million percent sense to add an extra train, add an extra hour, you know, that kind of thing, so we're working through that issue very much.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Maladra?
I do. So, I'm still fuzzy on some specifics. So, I'll start by saying, I'm, like Don, I'm a big supporter of the arts. In fact, music is kind of one of my passions, I don't play it very well, but I listen to it real good. So, I've been advocate of bringing music into downtown Geneva for a long time, but I think of little neighborhood clubs and maybe another folk festival or two. Woodstock was not in my realm of thinking. So, what's important to me is that whatever event, whatever venue we choose, that it fit, that it fit Geneva. You've gone a long way towards proving that you're willing to try and make it fit in terms of our way of doing business and things like that, which is great, and I appreciate that. But then I am left with just the size of this. So, we're looking at some number of people, we're looking at an annual event which we want to grow. So, what I'm trying to get my hand, my head around is how many people are we talking? So, I, Shakespeare in the Park holds 1,000, Elstrom Stadium holds 12,000, where are we sitting with Migfest? I looked through the packet, I talked to Alderman Simontian, I've seen numbers 2,500, 3,000, 5,000. What are we aiming for? You're selling tickets, you're keeping an eye on every ticket you sell, what's your target?
Well, and again, that's an excellent point you bring up because of the concerns that you do have. You know, if you put it in perspective, where you have your, your wine festival, your Festival of Wine and Swedish Days, I mean, from what I, I don't know what the actual numbers, I'm thinking it's 50, 60, 70, 100,000 people going through all this. And you mentioned also with, at the Cougars, 12,000 people and all those cars and everything. I'm looking, you know, 2,500 to tops 4,000 people.
And that's this year, and you want to grow from 4,000, or that's kind of where the comfort zone is?
Pardon me, yes, that's, that's a comfort zone. I mean, if it, you know, if it can grow, you know, because, I mean, this is first year for me, too, here. But it's not my first year doing this template, doing this formula, doing this, you know, and having an understanding and expectations. I have some numbers with regards to parking and traffic and cars versus attendance, you know, I wound up having 8,000 people for Leonard Skinnerd over there in Elgin. And we had a parking plan and we, you know, everything was, I mean, it went perfect, it really did. So, yeah, I mean, as far as growing, I'm not looking, it's not my, you know, would I like to see it go, because I, you can, mathematically, you can definitely hold more than 10,000 people in that, in that park.
Good, okay.
You can. Do I want to get, I mean, sure, I'd love for it to get there, if it was, fine, if it was perfect. But if it, you know, if, if at 5,000 or whatever it is, looks like it's going to be pushing the, the, the parameters of the city and the safety and, again, it's got, you know, I'm not, I'm not Live Nation, I'm not Jam Production, this is Onesti Entertainment. And I know you're concerned about the city, as well you should, but way before your concern is my own personal concern, because something happens, I know we all say, well, it's the city, it's going to be me, it's my name on it, so believe me, I want it to go fabulously. So, if it's going to be, you know, if I'm going to try to sell 20,000 tickets in a 5,000 seat venue, you know, it's going to hurt me before it even hurts you. And that's, that's my position with that, you know? I, that's why this must be not just profitable or successful, but well-run, because, you know, I've got a home, I've got a family, I got a little daughter, you know, and I, I'm concerned about how, you know, my name is. My name is, has a little bit, a little bit of value in this area, and it's important for me to make sure, I mean, I'm really sticking my, forget the finances, I'm sticking my neck out tremendously for this kind of a thing. And that's why, when we say, talk about the city services, you know, I, I think with, with the amount of risk that I'm putting on this, not just, not just financially, but personally, from a reputation standpoint, from the benefit, economic impact, that I believe, my personal belief, I'm glad they're not all like you, Alderman, with all due respect, they do spend money before they go to these shows, I mean, they do, they make a day of it, you know, they really do. I mean, not only that, but they do stop at a gas station locally, or they walk in a 7-Eleven, or whatever it is, they do locally or get a hotel room. So, and plus, we'll be renting out, you know, half of the Harrington because of the entertainers. You know, I mean, we'll be spending other monies in town. So, that's why, in the grand scheme of things, I believe the amount was $10,700, and that's an estimate, you know, but I think that was, I believe it should be less from a revised plan I'll be going over with, with the city here. But in light of, the entertainers alone are $200,000. It's just the entertainers, not the stage, not the sound, not the lights, not all the other things. I mean, it's, you know, it's a big, it's a big risk, and that's why I'm looking to say, hey, you know, will you partner with me on this, this, I will bring this to town, I'll bring something really good that you can be proud of. I know it's just a guy talking, you know, I know I got to prove myself, but that being said, you know, this isn't just kind of a whim here, I'm, I'm established in the community, and I've also have specific experience with this type of thing, with several municipalities, every single one have been, if I do say so myself, fabulous.
Okay. So, I'll get to the in-kind services in a minute. Back to my issue about, you know, can we manage it?
Yes.
So, you're looking at 5,000 people, tops?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I, I would say 4,000.
4,000?
Yes.
Okay. And you've talked to, you've talked to the county sheriff.
Yes.
So, actually, my opinion on that is, what happens on site is, it's your problem, like you said, it's your reputation on the line, if that goes bad, the years you've spent building your reputation are trash, that's not worth it.
Exactly.
So, I don't worry so much about that. I worry about 4,000 people leaving that site all at the same time and coming into our town. So, in terms of traffic control, crowd control, do, have we heard from the chiefs? Do we know where they stand, that we can manage this, et cetera?
Well, the chiefs are in the audience and can speak for themselves, but it's an ongoing discussion, there hasn't been a conclusion at this point. As Mr. Onesti just said, they're still working out details. In fact, we're still waiting for a CAD drawing to, to calculate the capacity of the site. And we, that came from a meeting two weeks ago this Wednesday, with our fire chief had asked for that. So, all of the details have not been worked out, but again, they can speak for themselves.
Well, no, absolutely, and, you know, once again, you know, this is a situation, first of all, look at the demographic, you know, the typical demographic is, well, kind of. And, and, you know, I mean, I don't know how many are going to be, you know, coming down Third Avenue, like coming down from the Frankenstein's mansion with the torches and this, you know, coming, you know, I don't think that's really going to be too much, I mean, personally, I don't think that, because that's the demographic I'm going for, I'm going for the...
Are you doing Rocky Horror Picture Show?
Yeah, exactly, Rocky Horror Picture Show. No, we're going to do, you know, things that are certain demographics that, these are people who want to go home, I mean, they just want to go home, I mean, after that amount of time and the music, typically. Again, you know, having, you know, you have, in downtown Elgin, for example, having Leonard Skinnerd, when they had, and they have a motorcycle, you know, I don't know what you call them, do you call them gangs or clubs or organizations? I don't know, you have, you know, I mean, a, a identified motorcycle organization in town, and all these concerns and all this stuff, you know?
Taxes.
And within 15, 20 minutes, people are gone. You know, I mean, there's a way to do it, and again, you know, I think the parking is spread out enough where we have, where they'll, it's not going to be just one big mass exodus. You know, we have several exits, I mean, we have a procedure to do that as well. The property itself is, is wide, you know, it's not just a little, you know, so they will be, they'll be dispersed a certain way. And, you know, will it, will it cause for maybe some extra traffic control? We definitely believe that is the case, and that's what we'll be working out with Chief Mexon. But, you know, again, from my experience, not being a law enforcement official, but from my personal experience, it's, it should be completely manageable.
Okay. My, my position on the in-kind services has nothing to do with you or the risk involved and things like that, we talked about this. It's the, if we say yes to you, the next person who comes, what do we say to them? And I know I've heard from a lot of my partners on the council over the years, we should take each one on a case-by-case basis, which sounds really good until you piss somebody off by saying no to him when you've said yes to these other people. which sounds really good until you piss somebody off by saying no to him when you've said yes to these other people. So what we do, what we do currently, as far as I know, the, the groups that we do provide in-kind services for are groups that are either part of us. So when we did the water for the ice sculptures, that was basically giving ourselves water because that was Geneva Cultural Arts Commission, which is a subgroup of another group of, you know, the coal committee thing. And the Chamber of Commerce, which is all about Geneva. I, I understand and believe your, your objective of doing good for Geneva and your objective of doing good for Ron. And in fact, a successful experience for both of us will be if it's good for you and good for us. But it's different than, than what we provide in-kind services for. And it's got nothing in my mind to do with profit or nonprofit. It's got everything to do with, we have scarce resources. How do you make a determination that you consistently apply on where you, where you allocate those scarce resources? If this is really a make or break issue for you, I guess I would have to give it a whole lot of heavy consideration. But I, I don't believe it is a make or break issue for you and, and I'm in agreement with Alderman Rodecky. I would rather not see your success in a multi-year endeavor hinge on 10 grand in 2015. We could avoid that. I had a number of concerns coming into this and, and you've answered each and every one of them. And I thank you very much for that. I think that this is going to be a pretty good thing for Geneva, if only because if after it's over, you determine it wasn't that great and change it up a little bit.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais before I recognize Alderman Simoni a second time?
I don't want to argue with him.
Alderman Simoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things regarding to the size. I don't know if you all recall, maybe 14 years ago, that's where they had the fireworks. And if you've ever seen a mass exodus of people coming out of the Kane County Government Center all at once with their lawn chairs and their blankets and their coolers and everything else. And we managed that. And those folks had a park and there were thousands of them. So that land has had experience with large numbers of people and mass exodus at a single time at night. So I think size is, I think we've had some experience with regards to the, which is the issue at hand, the in-kind services. I, I, I take just the opposite tact. And that is, the time to participate, this is at the beginning, not after it's a success and later on down the road. I think the time is to make the contribution now to help in the success of the, of the, of the entity or the, the program. Like I said, you know, Ron's coming out of pocket with 200,000 to 300,000 in risk. There is going to be an economic impact. When I go to Arcata, I go to the office and have a bite to eat and I have a couple of drinks afterwards. When I go to a Bulls game, I go grab a bite to eat and I have something afterwards. I, so I believe there's going to be some economic impact here that's going to be positive for the town. I think there's also a, a brand impact for the city of Geneva. To 50,000 of his folks or Facebook, Geneva is going to be plastered all over the place. So there is some value in the brand being advertised. In the executive summary that was in the packet, it stated, we went through all the issues of the tight budget, the governors, general fund revenues to the municipalities, potentially a million dollars, the net operating days being reduced, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But none of that was addressed when we offered all the in-kind services that we've offered to Swedish Days, the Art Festival, Festival of Vine and Christmas Walk. I'm not saying that they shouldn't receive it. But if you're going to put a, if you're going to dictate that in-kind services are being impacted by all these, we should do it across the board. And we should look at in-kind services across the board if it's impacting our budgets that dramatically. Because even though these folks may be not-for-profit, because I'm not in a camp that says whether it should be profit or not-for-profit, but more impact than, I mean, these organizations make money and they're funded by a number of outside entities as well. Oh, let's see. Ron is, I mean, I think he's someone that obviously has, you know, he, he wanted much more from the city. Like I said, he wanted a spirits license, he wanted a, a later time on Sunday evening. He, he walked away from that because he knew it was problematic. And he obviously is working with the cultural arts to accommodate them. He's been very accommodating. And I think it is an investment that we as a city council should make. And if you say yes to one, you have to say yes to all. Well, I, I think that this is a, this is a special situation. I mean, this is a promotion, music, venue, whatever, and we, we categorize it like that. So if other venues like this come along, we can review them and see if they're willing to give. I mean, he's willing to work with all the restaurants and bars downtown, promote them, sponsor them and not charge them money to get on the website to do a Mig Fest dinner package, whatever it is. He's not looking to generate revenue from ours. He's looking to create revenue and impact the businesses. So for me, I think this is a very worthwhile investment today, not next year. And next year, if I'm sure it's extremely successful and he's generating the revenue, he won't be looking for in-kind services. He's looking for a little something from us to say, yeah, we, I mean, we've given nothing, other than permission. But other than that, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's fair for someone to make that kind of risk without saying, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to contribute because the impact to the city is going to be dramatic enough that it's, it's going to help everybody. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Mayor, while my house, I made it, took a 200-some-thousand-dollar risk. The city wasn't offering me any more to say, hey, welcome to Geneva. But I still chose to do my thing in Geneva. So I think it's a similar situation here. He's not a resident, but he's a business and he's looking to do business here. And with other businesses that open up, we might waive sales taxes or certain taxes, but we don't offer police services or anything like that. But that's, my only issue is, we say yes to Ron and then Mike comes and asks for something and we say no to Mike. Forgive Mike. This is what always happens. But you know what I'm getting at? We had an issue where we were allowing one, one person to do something, we denied another person to do it. That's affected us for years.
But, okay, then if that's the case, do you mind?
I'm just here to observe.
We should sell tickets to this.
If you, if that's, if that's the position, then let's take the position across the board. That says the government and business are separate. We don't invest in anything having to do with anything. But why, how can you draw the line? What's the line that you draw for Swedish Days, Art Festival, Festival of Vine and Christmas Walk? Is it because they're part of us?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the definition of how we give money?
Yeah.
They're part of us?
What is the, what is the mission and sole reason for being of the organization that runs all of those festivals?
What's the Chamber of Commerce?
Exactly. Geneva is the mission and sole purpose of the Chamber of Commerce. Geneva is the mission and sole purpose of the Cultural Arts Commission. Geneva is the sole mission and purpose for any other organization that we, that we give in-kind services for. The Concorde, which is actually a festival, which I didn't realize until recently, their sole mission in life is not Geneva and we do not offer in-kind services for them. So to me, it's a very simple and clear dividing line. If you are Geneva and you're about Geneva, then we talk about it. If you're a business or if you're not all about Geneva, then we wind up having to deal with each one on a case-by-case basis, which is kind of okay as long as we're able to defend it all the time. And I used to believe that the case-by-case basis was the way that we should do everything until it ended up causing us eight years of headaches. So that, that's just my side of it. But everything else, I think, you know, because you, as you know, I had a list of issues and you guys, you knocked them out of the park, so.
Alderman Cummings?
As a lot of you know, I'm, I'm really reluctant to mix government and business. And the last time this conversation came up, it was a slightly different venue. But the example was helping businesses, specifically helping businesses. And somebody made the comment that the city should grant money to the businesses that really need money. To me, that implies the business isn't going to make it unless we grant them some money. From a business standpoint, I don't want to toss money at a business that's right on the edge, that's teetering. My example was if Apple Records comes, if, Apple Records. It's because Onesti's here.
Boy. They're gone.
If Apple Store comes to Geneva and says, you know, we'd like something to show that we'd like to get you here, that we, that we want you here, and we grant Apple some money, I think that's a far better bet than if we grant it to, you know, Joe's Used Cars that wants to open a used car place on, on Third Street and have one car out in front or something equally risky. So, so with that, that's how I would examine things. Not the, not the purpose, but if we're going to, if we're going to put money out there, we can't throw the money away. We, we can't throw the money away. In this case, is, is Ron going to walk? Probably not. Is it a goodwill gesture? Could be. Is it, is it a good bet? That's what I'm asking. Is this a good, is this a good use of, of showing someone that we do want the business here? We think it's a good, a good decision. Whether it's non-for-profit, for-profit, arts, whatever, go down the list. Is it, is it a good risk reward? In this case, I, I think it is. And that's coming from someone who's pretty reluctant, as a business owner, who's really reluctant to have the government doing anything with me. And from someone in city council who's reluctant to start putting money up to businesses. I think there's a, a time and a place and this might be, this might be the venue. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Marks?
Maybe, Mary, as I was sitting here, I've been thinking about this. I mean, maybe it's not services in kind, but is there any way to use the hotel motel tax revenue for advertising to help offset that? Since he is bringing people to the city, I don't know that. Just thought I would toss that out.
It's not been budgeted. So whether it's general fund or hotel motel tax, it would be a budget amendment.
Okay.
Because we've allocated all of the hotel motel tax money for other purposes. So something would have to be set aside in order to replace it with this. It's possible, to answer your question, that it could be used for this purpose. It is specifically to be used for heads and beds to keep folks, if you can say, that some of these people are going to spend the night in Geneva that are going to the concert, $10,000 worth?
Well, no.
Might be stretching it.
But, but maybe some of it. I'm not saying.
Harrington, not a stretch at all.
That was not my comment, okay.
He told me to say it though earlier.
So, but, but my point was with, regardless of which fund it comes out of, we've heard about, you know, the wants versus needs and being fiscally conservative. Alderman Simoni was just talking about the fiscal tsunami that's coming our way. And we just need to, I think, recognize that this does set precedent, as Alderman Maladra said, and that, that is concerning to me. I don't think that we're talking about the merits, you know, of the potential impact or the merits of, of what Mr. Onesti's done. I, I think that's very evident that he's successful and, and I myself am a customer of his. You know, I, I enjoy going to the, the shows. But again, this is the new normal that we talked about. And this is trying to be consistent and trying to be, look at the whole budget, regardless of the fund that it comes out of, to say, is this a want or is this a need? Is it, is it the taxpayers of the cities' risk to invest in this? And, and I'm hopeful that Mr. Onesti will go ahead without the $10,000 and invest in the city and, and the concert and that it is successful. I'm sure that many of us plan on attending, but I think that he can do that. I believe without the $10,700 that the concert will still take place. So I don't see a need to donate that for this cause. I do believe that it's an investment that he is willing to make and that he will make. So regardless, but I, I'm happy to look into that aspect of it if the council wishes to look at, I mean, to look specifically at that fund. But again, regardless of which fund the money comes from, it's still money out, $10,700 out of the city's budget that I think could be better spent.
I'm, I'm just also wondering how this plays differently than giving a, a store that comes in a, a sales tax rebate or a real estate rebate that we've done. I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how this is different than that too. I mean, we want those people to come because they bring jobs, which have people spend money and that's the same thing here. I, I'm, you know, just still trying to juggle this all through my head of how is that different from trying to get a store in the town? Or, you know, or a bigger employer that we're going to give a discount to a real estate? We've done this for profitable businesses before, just in a different way, but it's still out of the general fund. So I, I, you know, profit or nonprofit isn't really my struggle here. It's just, so what if it's a tax rebate or a services in kind is how I struggle with this right now? And maybe you can help.
There's, there's two things. So first, the, the hotel motel tax, I think, is a, is a threat that I'd really like to see us pursue.
I would too.
Part of that is advertising. So if we have to take it from advertising via method A and apply it to advertising via method B, I, I think that that's kind of a wash. The investment in the store or some other business, we, we, we give a tax break on, on the knowledge that in some amount of time, we're going to get a direct benefit from that. That's going to be taxes coming into us. I'm a firm believer, you guys remember the whole for every dollar spent on the arts, the city reaps back $6. I agree with that, but I can't see it. Sort of like I'm taking that on faith. Nobody writes the city of Geneva a check for $6. So the investment in the tax, whatever we do, credit or break or whatever it's called, is a, is a, is a direct thing. I'm, I'm choosing as I would you, because you're a good, a good risk, to, to bar dance phrase. But at the end of that, I'm getting direct payback.
But isn't that part of the arts where you're getting $6 for one?
What's that?
Isn't that part, isn't his entertainment part of the arts or not?
Oh, definitely, but we don't see that directly.
Right.
That goes to, that goes to the business community.
I would, I would say that because something can't be quantified, you know, we're back to that, doesn't mean that it doesn't exist.
I agree.
You know, what's the branding worth? We talked about branding. What's the branding worth, the city of Geneva? What's, what's it worth to have 6,000 people in over three days? I don't know. It's not worth zero. It's not worth 50 million. It's worth something though. I, is it worth 10,700? I don't know.
Let me interrupt the debate.
Is the extra sales tax we're, you know, that we're getting from the dollars spent or the hotel? Is it worth, it's, you quantify some, but you can't quantify all of it.
I'll, I'll recognize Alderman Kilburg next, but we have a common courtesy amongst council members for either a council meeting or a committee of the hall that a meeting should exceed 10:00 PM. We need consent from the committee and/or council to exceed 10:00 PM. Does anyone object to exceeding past 10:00 PM? No, good, okay.
Did I still have to?
I can't catch a train out here at 10:37.
You guys are all debating, I don't know.
I don't know, but I would, I would, the only comment I want to make is I think it is worth looking at the hotel motel to see if, if we can reallocate something. I just, unfortunately, I wish I would have thought of that earlier so that Mary would have been prepared, but. been prepared, but it was just the advertising.
I still would recommend to get spending, no matter what fund.
I guess I would ask, I've attended your events, Dennis Stefano, Buckingham's, and the one that you referenced in the Italian Village, and Dick Biani?
That was awesome, wasn't it?
Yeah. No, you put on a good show.
Thank you.
Would you be agreeable to the city controlling the parking for this event, collecting $10, using our parking facilities? If what you say is true, if we're going to have 500 cars over three nights, 1,500 cars, that would be, at $10 a pop, that'd be 15 grand. In other words, the first 10,000 would go to cover police expenses, the security expenses as it relates to the city, and then anything above and beyond that, we could give to cultural arts.
I'd be 100% in favor of that. We do that with the city of Chicago and the University Village.
In other words, we could hire, you know, a small crew, and we'd have, you know, we'd have the prime parking right there, and I'm just saying, I think that, you know, we've talked around in circles about this all night. I'm just saying, this is one way that you could generate maybe about 15 grand, and take care of the expense, and also maybe generate some additional revenue if cultural arts is open to that. That's an idea that I just want to throw out, not that I want to plan your event for you.
No, you're welcome to do it.
But, I mean...
No, I'd be 100% in favor of that, absolutely.
Okay, now tell me that it can't be done.
It's not our property. The overflow lot is, belongs to the Union Pacific. The Metro Deck, or the deck at this train station, is co-owned by the city and Metro. So in order to charge for those, we would have to get their respective permissions.
All I can say is no.
Which is, which I've done before with UP, by the way, and Elgin, so it is possible.
That's just an idea.
Alderman Rodecky, then Alderman Berghardt?
You go to Ravinia, you're paying, it'll take 20 bucks to park up close.
Or more. $10 is, you're still doing the community a favor, believe me.
Yeah, plus I don't think it's going to be deterrent, where people are going to be parking east side of Geneva and walking 10 blocks.
Yeah, you know, the thought about charging for parking is just passing along a cost to the ratepayer or the customer anyway, and I just soon see you put 2% more on the price of the ticket, if $10,000 is going to be the make or break here. This is really not about $10,000. We've probably eaten that much up in the last four hours of all of our time talking about it. You know, it's about the concept of it, and it goes back to my comments before about, let's see how this goes, because I am really more concerned about the effect on the brand of Geneva. You know, the $10,000 or the, you know, as far as filling up hotels for that night or restaurants, you know, my guess is in the middle of July, the Harrington's probably booked right now anyway. So are most of the restaurants going to be. I do get that a year or two from now, what does this do for us? What is the long-term effect for that? And that's really what I want to see. You know, God forbid something go bad, and there's a, you know, there's an event that brings, that generates the brand of Geneva, then, you know, that's what I'm worried about. I'm not worried about the $10,000. So that's why I'd like to take a, give it a whirl, support you every way that we can with it. You obviously are willing to work with everybody to get this accomplished, and we should do that. And, you know, frankly, the $10,000, I would be surprised if this has really any real effect on the, you know, there's a larger conversation that I think needs to be had rather than, you know, who's going to pay the $10,000. So that's really the point of my comments, is, let's do everything we can to support you. Let's see how this goes, and let's see what the future holds for everybody. You know, your success is our success and vice versa. That's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Berghardt?
My question's for Mary, or maybe Chief Maxon might need to answer. How many events use police services each year, under, other than the Chamber events? I mean, you have all the charity-type races, Fox Valley Marathon passes through, used to have Pumpkins for a Cure. I mean, how many of events are we talking that would, perhaps, if we opened this door, could come to us and say, "Well, we're going to have a charity race on Saturday, we would like, you know, in-kind service from the police"? Yeah. We're a popular town, I know, for, especially charity races.
I don't have an exact number for you. I would guess it's probably at least 20, and it's in excess of $30,000 that we invoice.
And so all those, whether they're nonprofit or profit, they all...
Every event that we work, with the exception of the four that were mentioned earlier, gets invoiced.
And do police volunteer for those assignments?
They're...
Sorry, I'm a newbie, this is like...
There's typically a sign-up sheet. Sometimes they need a little encouragement. But for the most part, they are volunteer.
And can you list, besides, the charity races are what I think of, but are, what are some other examples of...
He's my special events guy. He can name them better than I could.
Hi there. We do several runs with the Geneva Academic Foundation. We do the Viking Summer 5K. Obviously, we do the city festivals. We do the Pumpkin for a Cure event. The Fox Valley Marathon is one of the bigger ones. I'm trying to think what some of the other runs are, but those are...
The concourse?
Yeah, the concourse is a big one. So those are the main events.
And those runs are becoming more popular?
Definitely.
I know they're big, they're good for raising funds for those organizations, okay.
Correct. And that's always the hard part with, we know they're fundraisers, but it's still a matter of paying for the service, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, that's it.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I came into this, sitting squarely with Alderman Maladra, and consistency, and what's it opened us up to? I guess it's a question for the attorney. If we did open it up to a for-profit entity to give in-kind services, would there be standing for any other, like the concourse?
I don't think the city attorney needs to answer. The short answer is, hell yeah.
That's what I thought. You know, I don't like the, I don't like to pick winners and losers with taxpayer money, but, you know, in the scheme of these types of venues, Mr. Onesti, you Google him, he's somebody. And he's got some, you know, he does some great stuff, and it's hard to deny that.
If it helps you give pause, I have questions to ask still. You'd like to consider it.
Well, my vote will probably surprise myself at the end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else in the dais? Audience? Mr. Onesti? Like Alderman Singer said, there's a few questions that I'm certain you and Mr. Simone have already seen from a number of folks, but I do have a couple of questions and perhaps some statements to make as well. As liquor commissioner, I have stated to you and the council in writing that I do not support the sale of spirits, and you chose to remove that from the request. There is an issue, however, that's percolating, but it's not our purview tonight, it can be discussed later, but it's in the interest of public disclosure. If the Saturday evening concert begins at 8:00 and you want to go to 11:30, that's a problem. Because our noise ordinance precludes anything past 11 o'clock on weekends. Just a heads up. Number two, let's see here. There's a number of things. Your ticket sales have been ongoing for several months. Can you give us a ballpark of how many tickets are sold today without sharing any trade secrets?
Yeah, it's about 600 just for the Friday.
Just for Friday, okay. In order to generate $10,000, let's just round it up, we'd have to generate over $100,000 in sales in the downtown. Or anywhere for that matter, in Geneva. The Cougars have been in operation for 25 years. They, on average, draw between 450,000 and 500,000 people a year. What percentage of those guests trickle into Geneva after a game, despite our efforts, the Chamber's efforts, and others? It's a challenge, no question. The Folk Festival that's held in Island Park draws between 15,000 and 20,000 people in a weekend. We used to provide them free hookup to our power. We haven't done that in, God, 10-plus years. Finally, those 15-plus thousand people are actually making their way up the hill to benefit from the restaurants and what have you, thanks to the co-marketing from the Chamber, economic development, and others. There's something that Mr. Onesti said I want to ask you, or give you a chance to clarify. After a concert like this, the fans just want to go home. As they go home, they're leaving our restaurants, our bars, and other places behind. Don't we want them to spend some time downtown Geneva, spending their cash?
Absolutely, and typically they do it before. They have dinner, and they go shopping, they make a day of it. That's why I don't do a, I'm not doing an all-day festival thing.
On Saturday? On Friday it starts at 6:00, correct?
Right. And Friday, again, typically what's going to happen is, people will be going to dinner prior to, especially, you know, I'll be starting the music a little bit later on Friday as well. So it's really, you know, when I say people typically want to go home, I mean, generally speaking, I can tell you that there is a, definitely, a significant amount of people that do want to go, as Alderman Simone has stated, to have a couple of drinks or have a drink right after. Or if there's any, if there are any restaurants, I don't know how many restaurants you do have open after 11:30, but whichever one is, I'm sure it'd be very, very busy.
Well, serving food, none, but you're right. I mean, in terms of drinks and enjoyable, and what have you, so...
Exactly. And it's also, you know, a situation where people drive down Geneva and they see how beautiful the downtown is, so they may not spend that money, that dollar, that day, but they'll probably come back the next week or the week after.
The reserved seating at, proposed at Gunner Anderson, that's all seats will be reserved, or 1,000 seats will be reserved?
No, there's a, pardon me, there's a 2,500 about to be, that'll be reserved. There'll be some lawn seating, not very much. But again, that's why I said the foundation of 1,000 will still let the show go on.
Right.
But the other ones, it will be refunded, or whatever the situation has to be with regards to the weather.
Okay.
And that's always, you know, just for your own constituency, it's 100% refund, fees, and all that kind of stuff.
You referenced that you've got some sunk costs, of course.
Yes.
But of course, your objective is to be profitable.
Sure.
Rightfully so.
Mm-hmm.
To, I think, Rodecky's point and others, and you've, you guys have heard from me in the emails, too, is I do not support the investment of our funds, et cetera, et cetera. And there is a difference between profit and not-for-profit. If we treat not-for-profits like we do profits, then we treat everybody the same, consistency being the key. I do see a Pandora's Box being opened, big time. It was 15 years ago this month, when a major motion picture company came to Geneva to film Road to Perdition, and they wanted to close Third Street for five days, excuse me, State Street in between Second and Third for five days. All hell broke loose in this community. You thought we had a, well, I'm not going to go that far, but all, you know what broke loose? This room was teeming with people saying, "No way, no way, no way, no way." They paid us. Not only overtime for our police and fire, but they also paid the merchants for the inconvenience, to the tune of, I believe, well over a million dollars. Did that result, did that movie result in people flooding to Geneva because, my God, they experienced it on the big screen? Eh, probably not. Was it cool? Hell yeah, it was awesome, man. It was great. The majority of the people stood around, watched Tom Hanks and the gangs run around, and then they all, you know, flooded out. I don't see the staying power with respect to this. Not that I don't think the concert's a great idea, because I do, and I've told you that. I've told Tom that, I've told everybody that. I think it's fantastic. There's several issues. Number one is, ain't our property. I don't foresee, I don't, I just, I can't envision folks who take the train or drive here, after the concert, then saying, "Hey, let's walk up the hill and cruise into downtown." I just don't see that happen. And I hope I'm wrong. I hope the hell I'm wrong. Investing $10,700, and that's, of course, that's the floor. It could be more, as we all know. Let's just say it's 10 grand. Sets terrible precedent, terrible precedent. We don't waive our water connection fees, we don't waive our electric utility connection fees for companies that yield tens of thousands of dollars to us a year in taxes. I don't think it's wise to invest $10,000 for what could possibly be a one-time event. That said, I'm not in favor of investing $10,000 ever for any event, profit or not-for-profit. I'm not in favor of supporting any organization, profit or not-for-profit, who want to use our brand, co-brand with us, use our services, all because we feel generous one day. I think it's the wrong thing to do. The economic impact statement that's provided for, or by you for St. Charles, it's golden, because the Arcata is located right downtown St. Charles. The proximity to everything is perfect. I mean, I've sat in, you know, the office and seen the crowds come and go. I don't see that synergy, unfortunately, with Gunner Anderson Park. I just don't see it. I believe the county, oh, I know the county has not yet determined exactly what they want to do. I think they're resting on what Geneva wants to do. Geneva supports a concert, an outdoor festival, absolutely. Geneva does not, at least this guy does not, support the investment of public funds to make this happen. Let's throw this out there, just for the hell of it. 4,000 people flooding out of there, "Oh my God, we've got a road diet under construction." What happens to that? Eh, who knows? We'll let the Geneva cops deal with that. I think in terms of Jim, the brand, there's a risk there, no question. But tonight's whole debate is about whether we invest 11 grand. I say we don't. I say we don't for the reasons we haven't done so in the past. I say we don't for the reasons that may very well come our way if we do in the future. It's not a good investment. Not because you're not a great guy, you are. It's because we just simply can't afford to do it. I think we put our professional staff, I think we put every organization out here, and I see faces in the crowd who belong to other organizations, who I'm certain will say, "Let's do it. Let's ask for the money. All I need is five people to say yes, and we get it done." Those are my two cents.
Well, if I can respond...
Oh yeah, please do.
Okay. You know, I respect your opinion, of course, in your professional role.
Let me say for the record, you and I had a very frank conversation last week, too. And that's how we operate, just right to the point, so...
Yeah.
Of course, we can't repeat half the language that was said, but nevertheless, so...
Worth thought. No, you know, I understand, and, you know, and I do, you know, I'm very sensitive to, again, the precedent, and, you know, and some of the things that you say, you know, I don't necessarily agree with, when you say, you know, you compare this to the Cougars. I mean, like you said, people get in their cars to drive to downtown Geneva. You know, number one, that's not a focus of their advertising or marketing strategies.
But it was, for years.
Well, I'm just saying, you know...
We actually invested money in doing exactly that. We had, we had stands on the, in the stadium saying, "Hey, after the game, come on down, bring your ticket, get half off at."
Well, the point here is, you know, you're asking people to get in their cars and do that, is one thing. It's literally right there. I mean, you know, I think, I mean, we all have our opinion, you know.
Of course.
Nobody's got their, the crystal ball out. But I do believe it's going to, would have an impact a little bit before, more so before the event than after the event. Also, with regards to, you know, the Road to Perdition, and, you know, I don't know what those facts and figures were, you know, I just know that, you know, I'm not trying to inconvenience the city, I'm not asking...
Oh, I know, I know.
I'm not asking to close any streets, you know, and again, the grand scheme of things, when you have your Swedish days, and you have streets closed, and tons of police, and all that kind of stuff, and tens of thousands of people here, you know, this is only 2,500 to 3,000 people. You know, I don't know if it's apples to apples or not, you know, again, I don't know, you guys would know that a lot better than I would. But we have to believe, we, I hope that we believe, that there's a certain amount of value in advertising and promotion, and this is a promotional tool, or else we wouldn't be doing it. And as far as your brand, you know, I'm coming, using your brand. I'm not using your brand, I'm not, I'm not seeking use of your brand. I'm welcoming the use of your brand. I can call it the Onesti Fest, I can call it the Arcata Fest, I can call it anything else, you know, and I can say it's at King County, not in Geneva. It's at King County, it's at King County. I mean, I don't have to say the word Geneva, unless we give an address. I mean, I don't have to say the word Geneva unless we give an address, if you don't want me to, but I'm calling it Migfest to help you brand something that you personally and other people have said would be a cool thing, would be of value, music in Geneva. Migfest means nothing to me outside of that. I don't have to call it music in Geneva. I don't, I don't have to have it here, and I don't have to brand it, you know, if that is a sincere concern, as it should be, of course, but if it's a real concern, I mean, don't do it at all, I mean, seriously. I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing this so that it would work with your brand, you know, but, you know, I, I stress, if you, if you feel it's that much of a risk to your brand, I, I don't want to be part of that risk, you know, I mean, a certain amount of risk on anything, I recognize that, of course. I mean, God forbid something major hap, you know, but it can happen anywhere, so, you know, you can't live your life that way. But I'm, 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 I'm embracing, I'm not using your brand, I'm embracing your brand, together and creating a, a marketing thing at my expense. It's going to cost me to promote as much as it has value, you know, a, a great name.
The King County Sheriff's Department submitted a proposed invoice of between five and six thousand dollars. Their letter that accompanied that estimated cost never even took in consideration, Mr. Onesti, Onesti Entertainment, you could ask for a waiver of these fees, it's just, this is what you're paying. And you didn't bat an eye about that.
Well, I don't know that you know that for sure, Mayor, but I can tell you.
I know that for sure, but.
Right, but I did, I batted a couple of eyes on that one, that's why I had conversations with, with the sheriff, and we're currently in conversations about batting our eyes with the guys that have fees that they're charging. And I can tell you that they have been very, very good about honing down on the meats themselves, and that's why it is, you know, less than, I mean, it's half of what, what you guys are suggesting, and they've got, you know, you know, this isn't a comparison, this isn't, you know, who's doing what, but you brought it up, so I'm just saying, yeah, I did bat my eyes in this conversation about it.
So there's a, there's a chance that the county might actually reduce their costs? The Sheriff's Department?
Well, I don't know, we can give, you know, Don a call, I guess, I mean, ask him, I'm not trying to be facetious.
No, no, I know that, I'm just curious, because it appears that, from my vantage point, everyone else has been, there's been an agreement that everyone else will be paid, whatever it is, yet the City of Geneva has to come up with eleven grand in order to quote "make it work." When we met several months ago, or two months ago, there was frank discussion, no pun intended, about hot dogs and hamburgers being served at the concert, when in fact, that sort of service would detract from perhaps our own merchants who might offer the same product.
Well, this is a very expensive initiative, and revenues have to be generated as well, you know. I don't know that a whole lot of people leave the concert and have a hot dog and come back in. I know that maybe, you know, those people, you know, I got to think, food at a concert is more of a necessity than experience, you know, I mean, people don't come to a concert and say, "Let's have dinner there," you know, they get hungry, they have a couple, they want to eat, that's what it's there for, you know. But I think the people that are, the people who would be the type of people to, to buy dinner and do that, will do that, and not go, "We could have a great burger at Stockholm's before, or maybe a hot dog, you know, between the concert." I think they'll, you know, I'm, you know, we're all, we're all giving our opinion of what people would do, of course, but I mean, I believe, I'm just addressing what you're saying here.
Let me, let me ask you a question based on my rudimentary math. Ten thousand dollars is the request. I pay ten thousand dollars a year in taxes. Of that, eight hundred bucks goes to the city. So in essence, I'm asking approximately what? Thirteen, fifteen, so, you know, it's a hundred, whatever, people to say, "All my city taxes will go toward this private venture because I think it's worth the investment." Do you think that would resonate?
I, I can't answer for anybody else, I just know that's.
I guess that would be a question of the council, too.
I just know that, you know, there are municipalities all over that realize the value of these types of things. There are municipalities that will, will give, or will, will budget, which this is not the time to do it, of course, I recognize that, but though, you know, there's some that give a million dollars to their local theater just to keep it running, and that I do know for a fact.
Oh, sure, I know Aurora does, I know the City of Nip, it provides two-point-seven-five million to the episode.
Exactly.
Opera.
Exactly.
Opera, I know that.
So there's, 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 there's value in amenities in a community, as, as you well know, because you guys have so many of them, and that's just, you know, that's just what this is to be looked at, is another amenity, to draw awareness, to draw business to the businesses, and, you know, quality of life. I mean, if those three things have the value, great, if they don't, then they don't, but I believe that this event will supply all three.
Forgive me for a moment here, I've got. With respect to Saturday evening, well, you actually, you mentioned six hundred tickets sold to date for Friday night, is there an estimated ticket sold for the remaining two evenings?
None have been sold yet, I've been waiting for these proceedings.
So theoretically, this could be a one-night event?
Well, not necessarily. The reason why this, this turned into a three-day is because of the, the way the lands are, and just the reasons, for a bunch of reasons, the production costs.
Okay.
We're going to make it, it need to be, you know, and the advertising costs, it's getting to be such a, kind of a costly thing, it made sense to amortize it over the three days, rather than just the one.
I have nothing else. Thank you for the frank discussion, I appreciate it. Anyone else?
You call a question?
Well, Ron, Mrs. Hill, no, I'm sorry, not you, Ron. The other Ron. You guys look so damn much alike, it's unbelievable. Mrs. Hill, welcome.
Carolyn Hill, eighteen fifty-five Southampton Court. Mayor Burns, Alderman, Mr. Kittredge. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I've been sitting here listening to this discussion, and I just want to make one quick comment regarding the discussion on the in-kind service and the investment that you're getting. Cultural Arts Commission, and I want to also say, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not representing the commission, but in two thousand and six, when we were organized, the city gave us five thousand dollars as seed money, because we, we needed something to go, go on, to get, to get going. So every year, we would make a request to the city for another five thousand dollars to help support, it was an investment, and we were denied. So that's why we created Dancing with the Stars and Each Are Ought Out, so that we could generate funds to provide these programs. So I'm not telling you how to vote, but that's, I've been sitting there just squirming, and I know the people sitting next to me are just probably, just control it, Carolyn, control it. So I had to make that comment, and I want you to just consider the investment that you have not made in cultural arts in the budget. But you have, I know physically, made an investment by attending our events, and I thank you.
And some of us have danced in them, Ms.
Yeah.
Alderman Cummings.
Which is why I'd pay double, not to see it, raise even more money. From the audience, anyone else? From the dais? The matter before us, ladies and gentlemen, is, is as stated in the agenda. The, the periphery conversation was, I think, just almost cathartic. The question before us is about investing the ten thousand seven hundred dollars. You'll forgive me for being overly aggressive, but I strongly recommend you vote no on Mr. Clerk, take the roll. Greg Malandra?
Point of order. What's an "I" vote?
An "I" vote is you support the motion to waive the fees.
Nope, no, that's not. So then I vote nay.
Wait a minute, that's not how it's written.
Time out.
No, no. That's not the way it's written.
Staff recommends denial, so an "I" is a deny.
I is?
Let's get this right.
No, 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 no.
It's to consider the request.
Request from Mr. Onesti Enterprises to contribute related costs. If you vote "I," you support the investment of ten thousand seven hundred dollars.
All right, thank you.
So I was correct.
So I vote nay.
Richard Marx?
This one's a tough one. Um, "I."
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Tom Simontian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mike Bruno? Tara Burkhart?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg? The motion fails six to three. This matter will not advance to a city council meeting. There being no additional business?
No, new business.
Right. Upcoming meetings, blah, 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 blah. Close session, God love us all, we can waive that until next October?
Please.
Did I say that? I don't think I did.
The motion adjourned is in order?
Hold on, wait. Under new business?
Forgive me. We do have an important matter Alderman Marx would like to bring up. I think the media would enjoy hearing this as well.
Um, you got to get order.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue just with some brief new business remarks, so if you choose to leave, oh so quietly. I hate it tonight, I know it.
Mayor, for Burns, in, probably in, for self-preservation, I, I know that it is a good possibility of next Tuesday night, the historic preservation ordinance coming before the, the committee of the whole, and I know that that is a very large ordinance as we stand, and I was just wondering if we could somehow, in the agenda, kind of put in order of how we're going to discuss some of those matters, in order to bring, to let people know, A, what's really going to be brought up, and in what order, you know, we know that, and maybe get some of the bigger questions out of the way right away, which may solve a lot of the issues for us, such as the owner consent, and the conservation district, and the fifty-one percent, you know, for or against those areas. And I was just wondering if we could do that, and what, how the committee of the whole felt in regards to that, to try to bring some.
Right. Alderman Marx and I have spoken about this matter several times, and we believe the best way to proceed would be to address those most salient issues, including owner consent. Fifty-one percent of the residents living within a proposed district have to support that district.
And the conservation.
And the conservation area. Number four would be the supermajority at the council.
Correct.
Is there any objection to kicking off that discussion in that regard? And Alderman Marx is chairing the meeting, so that's.
I told you it was self-preservation, too.
Is that for separate discussions, or is that bifurcating the vote on the ordinance? Because I think some of that is, is fairly integral to the ordinance, and, and I.
I think it'd be, well, my gut is the latter, but.
Yeah, because I think it's going to change that ordinance depending upon how these, these areas are discussed. I mean, I think we're going to have a fairly large crowd, I would suspect.
We will have a large crowd, but if, I, I, I'm hesitant to, you know, majority rules, obviously, I'm hesitant to vote piecemeal on some of those components.
I, I, that's why I brought it up tonight. I mean, because I'm, I think the discussion would go all which ways if we didn't kind of try to limit it somehow.
I, I think we definitely need to control the.
Is there a motion necessary to?
Not really. We don't need a motion. We can do a one of two, as, as a courtesy heads-up.
Right, and then the public knows, too.
Or if there's strong opposition to that, but floors everybody, so.
What happens, I mean, I think this, what happens is this crowd gets overwhelming. I have a funny feeling it's going to. I mean, should we reconsider a separate location?
Well, I think, to the matter at hand, my, my gut tells me this, that the vast majority of the X dozen pages of the ordinance is fairly housekeeping.
Right.
A lot of definition changes, what have you, but the crux of the issue seems to be.
Those four.
Those four issues. Are we better off focusing our energies right from the get-go on those four issues? Or do you want to literally go through it page by page? Which we have the right to do.
And that's why I thought I'd bring it up tonight.
And it could very well change between tomorrow night and Tuesday, too.
Correct, correct.
I would concur with that direction, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else chime in? We don't need a vote, per se, but Tara.
Since I'm new, can you explain? This is exactly how you'd envision this, if you were to follow, you know, Alderman Marx's position.
I, I think what we would do is.
We'd be taking separate votes on conservation districts, and then.
Because I think that's what most of these individuals are going to be here for certain areas, and the rest of the ordinance, I don't think is, again, it's housekeeping in some nature, but I think those are the bigger areas that, we're going to gravitate, I think, to those areas anyway, so if we have some type of order, it's easier to run the meeting.
It's not unlike the debate we had tonight regarding the proposed concert.
Right, correct, it's all over.
The focus was the one item, but there's a lot of other stuff to.
So, so I'm curious about Alderman Bruno's objection, so do you, do you, do you not think that each issue stands? It depends, particularly if we get into, if we get into fees, if that is something pulled out separately. I'm, I'm certainly supportive of the idea of organizing the discussion. I'm thinking after a broader discussion, I think we can take the temperature and decide to bifurcate then, but I, I'd be a little hesitant, just personally, at this point, saying this is going to be separate vote, this is going to be a separate vote.
Well, it would begin, of course, with the presentation by Mr. Lambert.
Would.
And then, of course, Mr. Marx is chairing, so my sense is a matter of gaining control from the get-go, as opposed to.
Letting it all go, yeah, because I think we'll lose focus.
Just as a suggestion, and staff did break it down when they went through HPC already, so they're, they're used to doing that, and presenting sections, and having HPC vote on separate sections. My suggestion would be that staff contact the chairman, Alderman Marx, that will be chairing the meeting that night, and work with him on organizing the discussion with the mayor signing, signing off on the, on the final layout of that organization, if that would work for everyone.
It's fine, I was just, no, I talked this, talked, discussed this with the mayor, and he said, "Let's, let's just let it go up ahead of time, rather than you and I trying to just dictate."
Because I'm not going to be there.
That's fine.
Not next to you, anyway.
I, I just think it's a better, and again, I have no problem working with the staff, if that's what they want, you know, but I just wanted to see what the council felt in order to, how we wanted to address this thing, too, because it's, it's going to be a, it's a fairly large, what's it, fifty-some pages as it is now? It's not a small, it's not a small ordinance. And I know that there was a lot of, I would say disappointment at some of the HPC meetings when they kind of started skipping around that ordinance, and people were thinking that certain things were going to be discussed that night, and that's what they were there for.
It reminds me of the Teyron Infil ordinance as well.
Yeah.
There was so much stuff.
There was so much in there.
There were three or four issues.
Right, and I think that those three or four issues, so, you know, you, you would like to present context, and you would like people to kind of get the, they're not going to get the whole thing.
They're not.
These eight-hundred-pound gorillas, speaking as a two-hundred-pound gorilla, these eight-hundred-pound gorillas get in the way of everything else, so if we can get them out of the way, I think that does make a lot. Well, but is it out of the way in terms of discussing how it fits in the ordinance? I, I absolutely agree. But, so for example. That we need separate discussions. Are you unhappy with the idea that we would say, "I like this ordinance, except for I want to get rid of conservation districts?" I mean, is it like an all-or-none deal?
No, I mean, it's, it's whatever the council.
Yeah, we're talking about primarily the, the, we don't want to talk details right now.
Right, no, we don't want to get into detail right now, but I mean.
And I was trying to understand.
And again, I think Mary had that idea of.
Yeah, sir, I, I think upfront, we can easily control the conversation, but I think before we decide tonight to break out separate votes on separate issues for staff to create the context of how they integrate into the ordinance, if we then decide it's getting too wacky, then we pull it out then, but I think we can still structure the conversation, you know, upfront, you'll have the gavel, structure the conversation, we're going to go through these hot-button items.
Let me get it.
Please, absolutely.
Throw something out, and this is, this is no indictment of Alderman Marx or anything, but given the, the size of this and complexity of this and discussion that's going to be revolving around this, um, you know, Mr. Mayor, you have the most experience chairing these types of meetings in the past, and, and...
I, I just don't like Rich the most.
Well, and, but, but we're truly, and the other part of my comment with this is, you know, once he takes the chair, he removes himself from a lot of the discussion, and he becomes more of the parliamentarian and the referee in it, and that I'm not so sure that ten-sitting Alderman having full bore in the discussion isn't the best way to go with it. So, I mean, I just throw that out. It's...
We had talked about the same thing before I even knew it was Alderman Marx's turn, so...
I defer to the will of the committee, and of course...
I do, too, because we and I had discussed that ourselves. I mean, it's not a...
I think sometimes there's an issue that's just so big.
Well, why don't we just all bring our packets to the Memorial Day Parade and just...
I want to address the other issue. What happens if 300 people show up here? What are we gonna do?
We go through it twice. Then we get, then we get, uh, we get Whitesnakes ass in here, and so...
We get 10 bucks for partying.
We start charging.
That's how we make our 10 grand. Didn't even think of it.
Have an entrance fee.
You know...
We have valet parking.
Yeah, valet parking.
I mean, what's your sense? Do we need to move the venue?
No, I'm just saying, what if? I mean...
We, actually, Jean and I talked about that. Our concern was that it's not televised if we move it anywhere from, except here, and I think people are gonna be looking...
High school auditorium.
To watch it on TV.
About the high school auditorium?
I don't know.
That would be televised. That would be big.
I don't know that it can be broadcast from there.
Especially live, yeah.
They broadcast other things.
Live?
Oh, no, 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 I don't know if they're live.
Well, why don't, why don't Mary and I and Rich discuss this offline, so you guys can all go home?
I, I want to toss out, I'd, I would love, the more Alderman, the better in the discussion. I would love to see Rich as an Alderman.
Okay, Tara, your turn.
I agree with him. Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
There you go.
You'd have an appointment to make pretty quick after next week.
Send, send Sino an email saying, "We all voted支持." Share next week.
Rich and I and Mary will offline, so...
And we'll check on the high school auditorium.
Yeah, we'll check on the high school, too.
And I have just...
Mary? Yes?
One more thing, please. For the throngs of people that are watching on television, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that as of tomorrow night, State Street will be shut down. We have a moving construction zone going through with the resurfacing project, so it will start, um, and they will be posting no parking signs during the evening when Plody is working, uh, in that particular area, so just wanted to make people aware of that, so that they don't park there in the evening and get towed away. So, and we're doing that to try to accommodate the businesses, to keep the businesses open during the day, um, and, um, parking available to them, and then closing it down in the evening, so...
What are the times when we close the parking?
Uh, 6:00 to, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM will be the actual no parking timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? New business? Nothing? Motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Second.
Makes the motion, seconded by Babica, who?
Second.
Seconded by Simonian. All in favor, say aye.
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 Microphones are off.